We're not supposed to start until six thirty-five, but since everybody's seated and nice and quiet in the audience, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll? Mayor Ford? Here.
Mayor Prochem Teeter?
Here.
Councilmember Madera?
Present.
Councilmember Frank?
Present.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Douglas?
Present.
Councilmember Huesman?
Present.
Councilmember Hearst?
Present.
Councilmember Hordiola?
Present.
Mr. Mary, you have a quorum.
Thank you for the record. We're all here this evening. Um, I would like to ask the audience to stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance, libidali of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
All right. First item on the agenda is, uh, under recognition. We have, uh, twenty nineteen Colorado Parks and Recreation Association awards recognition. Um, why don't, do me a favor Dylan. Um, why don't we leave these back there, uh, because I started this meeting early and then grab them here about six forty. Thank you. Let's see. I wanted to, uh, invite all of the Parks and Recreation staff forward, please. Carolyn, can they all come up here, please?
Come on, Tony.
Come on up. Good evening.
Honorable Mayor, members of city council, um, it's my pleasure tonight to present to city council two awards that the Commerce City Parks Recreation and Golf Department accepted on October tenth at our Colorado Parks and Recreation Association Annual Conference. Um, those two awards included the CPRA new facility design for Bison Ridge Recreation Center. So on October tenth, Karen O'Donnell and Chad Redden accepted the award on behalf of the Commerce City resident, city council and staff um, for the outstanding new facility design for the Bison Ridge Recreation Center. That was the first award that we received and Chad's here tonight with the award.
Nice.
The second award that was received was the, by an individual with our department and that happens to be Tony Arameo, and I wanted to read just a little bit about the award. The Colorado Parks and Recreation Association Fellow Award highlights individuals who exemplify leadership, inspiration and noteworthy contributions to the park and recreation profession. It is the highest honor one can receive as a Colorado Parks and Recreation professional. It is a pleasure to announce that Tony Arameo, the Parks Recreation and Golf Capital Projects Manager, is the two thousand nineteen CPRA fellow award winner. Tony's a dedicated park and recreation professional working in the field since nineteen ninety-two. He has been active in the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association over the past nineteen years. He began his notable career with the city of Commerce City as a park maintenance worker in nineteen ninety-two after transferring into parks from the Public Works Department. His career in Commerce City advanced as he accepted the position of park supervisor. He continued his progression when he accepted the role of park superintendent where he used his experience and leadership skills to oversee the parks division for five years. In two thousand and five, Tony took on the role as the Parks Recreation and Golf Capital Projects Manager with the city of Commerce City. Tony has managed and overseen hundreds of capital repair and replacement projects including new playground structures throughout the city as well as at least seven new parks and a variety of trails, open space and building grounds for new city structures such as the Civic Center, Bison Ridge and Eagle Point Recreation Centers and the Conter Heritage and Culture Center. He continues to grow and inspire adapting to ongoing change in an organization that has more than doubled in population since two thousand and two. Tony has long been a leader in the field of parks and recreation and well-known within Commerce City community to be both professional and action-oriented. His tireless efforts as a volunteer within CPRA, the park section and a variety of private and public organizations regarding playground safety is commendable. private and public organizations regarding playground safety is commendable. He has received numerous awards for these efforts, including recognition from Commerce City and CPRA. Tony has also taken on a number of leadership roles outside of his organization. He has served as the Chair-elect for the Park Section in 2005-6 and the Park Section Chair in 2007-8. Tony has always been involved in a volunteer role for CPRA, which speaks immensely to his character, both professionally and personally. He always offers to help with the Certified Playground Safety Inspector's Course. He has presented a multitude of playground safety sessions at the Park Spring Workshops over the past 12 years, and he has volunteered on the Planning Committee in various roles. He has made numerous presentations at CPRA Annual Conferences. He is considered the playground safety subject matter expert, and happily helps people that are referred to him. He has been described as an amazing person. Amazing certainly resonates in all that Tony does, both personally and professionally. He is devoted to serving his community by providing exceptional service throughout Colorado and CPRA. Peers respect him and his contributions and see him as a champion of parks and recreation. His passion is evident through his involvement in service to CPRA and communities throughout Colorado for over 25 years. He has dedicated an endless number of hours and reached countless individuals sharing his knowledge, advice, and passion for the industry. His dedication is both unwavering and inspiring. He is an amazing person, professional, mentor, and public servant. So I'm here tonight to present to you our CPRA 2019 Fellow Award. Tony's here, and so is his family, Veronica, Sierra, and Savannah, if they want to come up too, please.
Absolutely, we want them to come up. Congratulations, Tony.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. This is very honored, I'm very honored to receive this award and represent Commerce City. It's not without all the support from you as well, as well as the department and all the citizens in the city that I am able to bring this home. So, thank you very much for everything the city has done for me and my family.
That's awesome, Tony. Thank you for everything you've done for the community. Me and you got to work together for years when I was in the Public Works Department, and to be able to sit at this level and watch you grow over the years has been great. You actually went through some trials and tribulations in the process, but at the end of, at the end of the day, you learned a lot about your job and your passion to take care of the residents from their parks and recreational needs, I think is implorable. I think you've done a great service to the community, and there's no one more deserving of that award than you. So, I appreciate what you've done for the city, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Mr. Teeter?
Thank you for, and congratulations for winning this award.
Thank you.
I can honestly say I know everybody behind you, and great job to all of you for all the work you did for him also. And I know they're gonna recognize you again next year in your group. This new park that we are planning down at the Eagle Ridge, that is gonna bring a lot of attention to Commerce City, and for the public to understand what this new park is gonna be. I think I want to ask Jose to explain, because he understands he's the backbone behind this.
The Veterans Park? Yeah, I think myself and Councilman Huesman and Councilwoman Frank, our vision was something like Rocket Park, which is in Hollywood, which is an all-inclusive park for every able child body, or child that has any type of disability, they're gonna be able to play on this park. So, it's a huge win for Commerce City. There's three fully inclusive parks, will be the fourth one, so we're gonna really hype it up, and it's gonna attract for our residents and then people outside our residence, so that's...
So you'll definitely win an award for that one next year, and I won't be around for it, so I'm gonna congratulate all you guys now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's a couple different ways that I could handle this, but I think I haven't figured out how I want to do this. I don't want to detract from either award tonight, so what I would like to do is thank all of the Parks and Rec staff for the efforts in the design of Bison Ridge and winning that award. I would like to have all of the Parks and Rec employees come up here, and we'll come down and take a picture with you. And then, as soon as we're done taking a picture, I want to then have Tony and his family come up here, and we'll take some pictures with Tony. So let's do it in that manner, so none of you have to go sit down, and Tony gets to be a part of both pictures, and we'll have his family on the set. All right? All right, the next item, citizen communication. And he's bringing the sheet up now, but I want to ask the council if they want to amend the agenda this evening. Saying no one? We will not amend the agenda, and we will take the sign-up sheet and go through citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. If you're here to speak on an ordinance or resolution that is not on the consent agenda, including the oil and gas updates this evening and the international codes, please wait until that item is called. City council is not able to hear any comments about, at this time, on land use matters that are before or may come before the city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. And council, you need to wait until administrative council business to take action in response to citizen communication. You'll all be asked to give your name and address for the record, please, when you're called forward. One person on the citizen communication sign-up sheet, John Breckney? Hopefully I got that right. Brad B. Bradkey? I don't know. Come on up. There you are. And name an address for the record, please. And this is, is your comments on oil and gas, sir?
Mayor, thank you. It's actually more general than oil and gas, so I think it'd probably be appropriate to talk about that.
As long as it is not involving the regulations this evening. Otherwise, I'll have to have you wait until the oil and gas item on the agenda.
I wonder if, I think I might be able to keep it broad enough to leave.
Here's the problem. If it's gonna be about oil and gas and regulations, I can't give you any breaks with the rest of this, the rest of the audience. I've got a list of people here, they're gonna want to get out of here early, too.
All right. I'm gonna honor your, I think I could do it, Mayor, but I think I'll wait.
All right, I'll call on you when we get to that point. That's why I had asked if there was anyone who wanted to amend the agenda. That didn't happen. So, seeing there is no of the regular citizen communication this morning, we will move on in the agenda. Start with public hearing ordinance 2216 through 2224, 2238, 2242, 2243, which is the adoption of the Family of International Building Code. Next is a public hearing on the adoption of the building code that were approved on first reading. Per the charter, a public hearing on these codes must be held on the second reading. So I'm gonna open the public hearing and accept the presentation from staff from the October 7th meeting into the record. Is there anyone on council that has any questions for staff regarding the ordinances concerning the international building codes that were approved on first reading? Saying no one. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on the matter of the international building codes that were adopted on first reading? Saying no one. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and would like to ask the council for a motion. Mr. Huesman?
Are we doing these individually, or can we limp them all together?
All together.
Yes. Mayor Ford, all of the items are placed on the consent agenda, so at this point it would be a motion on the consent agenda.
All right. Good.
Unless anyone wants to remove it.
No, go ahead.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by council as seated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Douglas. All right. I need a second before I can go there. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion in a second on the consent agenda. Before I have the titles read, there has been a request to remove an item from the consent agenda. Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Resolution 2019-115. And the bottom, resolution authorizing cost-sharing agreement with Reunion Metro District relating to improvements to 112th Avenue.
Buffalo Run Golf Course? All right.
Yep.
So I have had a request to remove Resolution 2019-115, which is a resolution authorizing cost-share agreement with Reunion Metropolitan District relating to improvements to 112th Avenue and Buffalo Run Golf Course, and the execution and acquisition of temporary construction easements associated with that agreement. That will come back to as soon as we're done with the consent agenda. Will the motion maker amend the motion? Mr. Huesman?
I'd like to amend my motion to approve the consent agenda as modified by Councilman Douglas. My council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
All right, and now I have a motion in a second. With the city attorney, please read the titles on the consent agenda.
Minutes of October 1, 2019, ordinance 2216, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Division 1 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International Building Code, including appendix chapters C, E, F, G, H, I, and J with amendments. Ordinance 2217, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Division 2 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International Residential Code, including appendix chapters H, J, K, and M with amendments. Ordinance 2218, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Division 3 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International existing building code, including appendix chapter B with amendments. Ordinance 2219, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Division 10 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International Fire Code, including appendix chapters B, C, D, E, F, H, I, J, K, M, and N with amendments. Ordinance 2220, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Division 9 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code with amendments. Ordinance 2221, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Division 8 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International Fuel-Gas Code, including appendix chapters A, B, and C with amendments. Ordinance 2222, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Division 7 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International Mechanical Code, including appendix chapter A with amendments. Ordinance 2223, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Sections 5-4602, 5-4603, 5-4-604, and 5-4605 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International Plumbing Code, including appendix chapters B, C, D, and E with amendments. Ordinance 2224, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Division 4 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, including appendix chapter A with amendments. Ordinance 2238, an ordinance enacting Division 11 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to adopt the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code with amendments. Ordinance 2242, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 5-4502, and repealing Sections 5-4503 and 5-4504 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to re-adopt the 2006 edition of the International Code, Council Electrical Administrative Provisions with amendments. Ordinance 2243, an ordinance enacting Article 5 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to establish a master code enforcement article applicable to all international codes. Ordinance 2236, an ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code regarding alcoholic beverages and medical marijuana to conform to recent changes in the state liquor code to clarify the authority of the liquor authority and other matters. Ordinance 2245, an ordinance amending Section 12-7,000 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code relating to the regulation of cigarettes, tobacco products, and nicotine products. Ordinance AN25319, an ordinance annexing certain unincorporated territory known as Third Creek West, 1 of 2 to the city of Commerce City, Colorado. Ordinance AN25419, an ordinance annexing certain unincorporated territory known as Third Creek West, 2 of 2 to the city of Commerce City, Colorado. Ordinance Z9461719, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, for rezoning to PUD Zone District, and approving a PUD Zone document for the property annexed as Third Creek West from Adams County, unincorporated Adams County, to PUD planned unit development. Ordinance Z96019, an ordinance rezoning from C3 Regional Commercial District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The property described in Exhibit A attached here, too, and made apart here, located at 6370 Poplar Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, to reflect said rezoning. Resolution 2019-114, resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service for the maintenance of access connections to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge.
All righty. I have a motion in a second. The titles have all been read. I'll ask for our roll call. For the record, the consent agenda is approved unanimously by the council as seated this evening. We do have a pulled item, which is 2019-115. I will turn it over to Mr. Douglas to explain his reasonings for pulling it.
Yes. I'd like to know if the applicant's here tonight? If I could address this to Reunion Metro District?
I believe the other party to the agreement is here. Do you have questions for them?
Yes, I do. I just want to know how this is being funded from the Metro District? Is this something that's already been part of their mill, or is this something that's gonna go before Metro District Board to increase the mill to cover the cost?
Mr. Hayes, do you want to address that?
I do see Mr. Hayes here. I think more folks on his team are going to be here tonight. Mr. Hayes cannot answer the question. We might have to pause until the rest of his team is here, maybe move on with another item on the agenda. Mr. Hayes, are you able to answer that question?
Come on up to the podium, Tim.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and now members of council. Could you repeat the question, please?
I was asking about...
I was asking about the, about the improvements, the cost. Is this cost already covered, or is this something that's gonna be going out to the board for them to ask for a raise in the mill levy?
So, I can tell you that the, um, the board considered their preliminary budget for twenty-twenty a couple of weeks ago. I think they had a work session on that. Um, this is included in their, their capital plan for the district. Uh, there are no intentions to, uh, raise any mill levies or any increases like that. Uh, in fact, uh, more than likely Clayton Properties Group or Oakwood would be, um, doing some of the initial funding and then seeking reimbursement from the district, uh, afterwards.
Okay. And seeking reimbursement, still, that's not gonna be asking later to increase the mill to cover the cost?
That's correct. That's correct. The, uh, agreements with the current districts, North Range, District one and two, um, have sufficient revenues to cover the, uh, the cost that's included in the Reunion Metro District budget.
All right. Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jim. Is there any other questions concerning, uh, twenty-nineteen-dash-one-one-five? Mr. Hughesman? No problem. No other questions? I'm open to, uh, a motion on twenty-nineteen-dash-one-one-five. Mr. Teeter?
I can make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-nineteen-dash-one-one-five.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-nineteen-dash-one-one-five. Need to read that title?
Resolution twenty-nineteen-one-one-five, resolution authorizing cost-share agreement with Reunion Metropolitan District relating to improvements to One Hundred and Twelfth Avenue and Buffalo Run Golf Course and the execution and acquisition of temporary construction easements associated with that agreement.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right. That takes us, uh, to Resolution twenty-nineteen-dash-eighty-six, I believe? Nope, sorry.
Thirty.
Public hearing. Twenty-nineteen-dash-thirty, adopting the twenty-twenty budget and providing for a twenty-nineteen tax levy. Um, tonight's first public hearing was continued from October twenty-first. I'm gonna go ahead and reopen that public hearing and ask council if they have any questions. Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this matter? Saying no one. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Mr. Hughesman?
Motion to approve Resolution two-zero-one-nine-dash-three-zero.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. To approve Resolution twenty-nineteen-dash-thirty, how will the city attorney please read that title?
Resolution twenty-nineteen-thirty, resolution adopting the budget for the City of Commerce City, Colorado, for the year twenty-twenty and providing for the twenty-nineteen Commerce City tax levy.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now that takes us to Resolution twenty-nineteen-dash-eighty-six, which is the Third Creek Metropolitan Districts one through three. Uh, tonight's, uh, second public hearing was continued from October seventh, uh, twenty-nineteen. I'll remind the council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express in options or opinions or indicate how you will vote. Um, I'm gonna open that public hearing and invite the staff forward to make their presentation.
Good evening, council. Thank you. Robin Kearns, planner here with Commerce City. Appreciate your time this evening. Here to present service plan for the following metro district is case number M-D dash-one-one-zero dash nineteen for the Third Creek Metro District, numbers one through three. This, uh, proposal is for three new districts. Um, basically, they will all be formed within the city limits with a total estimated public improvements cost of seventy-seven million eight-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. The total debt issuance expected with the service plan is six-hundred, sorry, sixty million eight-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars. This presentation will cover basically the purposes of metro districts, sort of give everybody kind of the refresher on, on what these are about and follow through with some, um, action tonight, uh, and we will review the key components of this service plan. Um, the purpose and overview of a sort of metropolitan district are, um, for government entities to create and provide services for an area similar to, uh, normal city government, but in case, in this case, it is a, called a metropolitan district. So, these are for financing and constructing the infrastructure that's needed for development, operations, and maintenance. In this case, we are discussing, uh, commercial and residential development. Um, the service plans are defined, and they limit the district's functions, powers, and revenue, and the district must comply with, um, the Tabor Law, um, it's Colorado Open Records Act and the Open Meetings Law, as well as Title thirty-two. District revenue is derived from property taxes and fees subject to the service plan, and the district debt is not an obligation of the city and does not impact the city's budget. Commerce City uses a model service plan that has been modified to address the applicant's requests and other updates. City council action is needed to proceed with the formation of a district. That's our meeting this evening. City council may approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove of a service plan. City council must disapprove of a service plan unless it finds satisfactory evidence is presented showing the following: sufficient existing and projected need for the organized service, existing services adequate, inadequate for present and projected needs, proposed district is capable of providing economical and sufficient service, an area to be included has or will have financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. Basic elements of service plans, um, are as follows. There's establishing the general powers, including constructing, improving, improvements in operating of parks and landscaping, et cetera. Um, the debt issuance is limited based on an explicit formula within that service plan. There's a mill levy caps called out. It allows for imposition of fees. Reimbursement agreements cannot include compounding interest. Uh, that's fairness opinion on interest rate. Um, it requires city council approval for modifications, use of eminent domain, and inclusions, exclusions outside of the boundaries of service plan area, and authorizes district activities in the IGA. A disclosure to initial purchasers, again, these are components of the common service plan. Um, disclosure of potential resident, to residential, potential residential buyers of the mill levies, fees, and taxes. A comment on issue of debt and refinancing, um, that's not an approval. Requires board meetings to be held within the city. Requires statutory annual notice to be mailed to property owners by January thirty-first of a year. Requires annual report to the city. Recorded statement regarding tax and debt. Uh, more specifically, in this case, this metropolitan district, uh, and service plan are for this area, Third Creek West, um, which has recently been annexed, is, was in the process. It's been heard before. City council, uh, zoned PUD, and, uh, this is one more step in terms of its development. You can see the property is at the northeast corner of One Hundred and Forty-oth and E-four-seventy. It's approximately two-hundred, um, and thirty-plus acres. So, in this specific metro district, the service plan for three districts, um, basically looking at a residential, a mixed use, and a commercial use. The estimated improvement costs, um, kinda stated before, seventy-seven million eight-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-four. The debt issuance limit of sixty million eight-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand. The maximum combined mill levy is sixty-six-point-three-three-three. That represents a maximum debt mill levy of sixty-six-point-three-three, sorry, maximum debt mill levy of fifty-five-point-two-seven-seven, and a maximum operations and maintenance mill levy of eleven-point-oh-five-six. Those two numbers combined get you to that maximum combined. Um, there is organizational cost expected of fifty thousand and a first-year operating budget of twenty-five thousand. Uh, the applicant's financial plan, um, in the attached packet finds sufficient property tax and other revenues to discharge of the proposed indebtedness mentioned above. So, to approve a service plan, council must find the following. There is sufficient existing and projected need for organized service in the area to be served by the proposed special district. The existing service in the area to be served by the proposed special district is inadequate for present and projected needs. Proposed special district is capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within its proposed boundaries, and the area to be included in the proposed special district has or will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. In staff's review, the proposed service plan appears to, A, contain the information required under state statute, CRS thirty-two-dash-one-dash-two-zero-two-two, and to support a determination that the requirements of CRS thirty-two-dash-one-dash-two-zero-three-two are met based on the applicant's submissions. The applicant is here and will present additional supporting information and financial analysis. I'll transition to their presentation now.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, David Foster, three-sixty South Garfield, Denver, eight-oh-two-oh-nine. Uh, thanks again for the opportunity to be here. Uh, thank staff. Uh, thank your, uh, city attorney, and, and as you may or may not know, um, the city hired outside legal counsel as well, uh, which I thought was thoughtful, uh, to review and analyze, um, our service plan. Also wanted, uh, to make sure that you saw again that, uh, Rory Blakemore with Cowley was here, Susan Stanton, uh, with our team, as well as Alan Pogue, who is our, uh, metro district council. Uh, so, any of the more comprehensive, um, questions relating to district, uh, special district law will be directed to Alan. I have a, uh, presentation available. It's much along the lines of what you've seen. I, I don't mean, uh, I don't necessarily want to belabor this evening because I feel like we have taken a lot of your time over the last couple of months, and this is not, uh, hopefully, new to anybody, uh, on council. Uh, the, uh, intent was and continues to be to use our metro district, uh, to support, uh, some of the initial regional infrastructure in order to develop, um, the first, uh, project through Creek West. Uh, and the initial, uh, idea is to use about six and a half or seven million dollars of bonding capacity from that district, uh, in order to accommodate, uh, the initial regional, uh, improvements, in order to accommodate, uh, the first project. Again, I, I leave it to you, Mr. Mayor. I know you've got other things on the agenda tonight. We can go back through, uh, a couple of the slides that you've seen already, um, but, uh, this is not, I hope it's not new, uh, and I hope it's not news, uh, to anybody. I, I would, I would finish by saying this. I think that from the time that I started representing clients, uh, in Commerce City to today, the obligations and the requirements that you and the city, uh, are placing on these districts are, are, are right. Uh, I think they're correct. I think there's a lot more transparency. Um, I would consider it progress, not perfection. Uh, I think that we continue to see, um, modifications being made to special district law and, and the ways in which cities implement, um, these districts. Um, and again, happy to answer any questions that you all may have, uh, for, for me or anybody on our team.
All right, thank you. Um, does anybody on the council want to, uh, see their presentation if it is very similar to, um, the city's? Mr. Douglas?
It's similar. You said it's similar to the city's?
It's, um, we actually kind of brought the, many of the slides that we used, um, that describe the financing, um, plan for, uh, the regional infrastructure, kind of highlights where Third Creek West is, the regional infrastructure that's required, the combination of the, um, uh, GID funds with the developer advance in the metro district. So, it's, it's, you, you've seen the slides before. Um, we just didn't want to repeat the same special, you know, metro district, um, uh, information that your staff has already presented.
All right. Uh, I think there's, there's, uh, I think this, you know, we have a lot of citizens watching tonight and trying to understand metro districts and exactly how would this benefit, um, the residential and the commercial, so I think it wouldn't hurt to have the presentation. Since this is your presentation, I think it'd be nice for the, the audience to know and for those who are viewing.
All right. That's all it takes, is one, one, uh, person requesting that information, so I'll allow, um, that presentation now.
Okay. Happy, happy to show, um, these slides again. I don't know that I have any way to advance it.
I'll just let me know, David.
Thank you, Robin. Um, again, I, you can see here on this particular slide that, um, we're dealing with the Third Creek West, uh, property, which is just north of, I know it's a little bit small to see. We tried to put a lot of stuff on this, this map, but it is just north of Prime Sites. It is just, uh, it's north of Penya Boulevard. It is just to the east, uh, of E-four-seventy. Um, hopefully, you can see that property. It's the larger property. It's, you know, plus or minus fifteen hundred acres. Um, thanks. And then you can see just to the, yes, where you're touching right now, Robin, is the Third Creek, oh, you were back over there. Yeah, the Third Creek West is, uh, at the interchange there. So, just a little bit. Okay. Um, this was the, the history of the process, and then, um, the last addition that we made to this was city council and unanimous approval of the annexation, the zoning, and the GID inclusion that have happened over the course of the last, uh, six weeks, uh, here in the city, and in fact, just on your consent agenda tonight. So, this was, uh, again, I think we spent the majority of our time talking about this issue, and that was, how were we going to be able to, uh, create a circumstance to, um, develop, uh, public infrastructure to get across, uh, E-four-seventy? And what we ultimately put together was this package that takes, um, a seven-million-dollar, um, GID investment from the commercial GID, and then the six-point-eight-million dollars of developer investment, limited to four percent interest rate, uh, to the metro district. That's a loan to the district, and then those dollars are used to, um, make the total nearly fourteen-million-dollar public, uh, investment, uh, in the initial regional, uh, infrastructure. And, uh, you'll remember that we put some, uh, timing and caveats around the repayment of those dollars, and most notably, limiting, um, limiting the, the bond rate, uh, the interest rate, uh, on those, on those bonds. You can go to the, the next slide. Um, and you can generally see here, uh, kind of, uh, denoted in, in varying shades of blue, uh, Districts one, two, and three, that we have kept the regional, that we've kept the residential and the, um, uh, commercial metropolitan district separated and segregated. Two and three being, uh, commercial and, uh, District one having, uh, the majority of our residential use. Um, also, I think what is helpful to see is just, you know, this is what we do in the marketplace to try and gauge competitiveness, and you'll see that the Third Creek, um, metro district has a sixty-six mill levy. You just, Robin, kinda went through how that gets broken down, and you can see how that is, uh, compared to some of the other, uh, communities within, um, Commerce City. We wanted to limit our analysis to, to Commerce City. Again, I, uh, this, you, you've seen this in terms of what we think that, and what we hope, um, this investment that we're planning to make in the community, uh, with your approval, uh, is going to ultimately result in, and, and you'll remember, and I think this was probably one of the more critical aspects, is this is just the first two-hundred, uh, acres of the fifteen-hundred-acre project. is this is just the first 200 acres of the 1,500 acre project. And you will continue, most of you will continue to sit up there and be able to let us know by, hopefully, your approvals in the future, of whether or not we got this right. And I can't quite imagine coming in front of this group again if we haven't gotten it right. So that ultimately gives you the opportunity to navigate as we have success, we think the city has success, and then we'll be hopefully annexing the balance of the property into the city. That is, that is it.
All right.
Councilman Douglas, I hope that was helpful.
Yeah, yes, I appreciate that. You know, a question I had was, what's the time limit, are you asking for this Metro District service plan?
You know, I think that the, the timing has a lot to do with the longevity of the bonds that are issued. And I, I'm not sure what the timeframe is for the bonds. Forty years is the full length that the bonds can be issued.
Okay. I was thinking more like around 30 or so because of, folks have, I mean, I mean, when, especially residential, you're looking at mortgages are 30 years, majority of them are not 40. So just that time spent as far as having that out there, and then the mil levy rate of being 66. And then for the $77 million, that's just for the 230 acres. That's not for the 1,500 acres. That's just for 238 built out, correct?
That, I mean, as you know, those are big numbers that are, you want to get the greatest amount of opportunity to issue the debt in advance. It, it does include infrastructure that would benefit the balance of the 1,500 acres or the, the additional 1,300 acres. So to the extent that those other properties are ultimately benefited, there are always opportunities to enter into an IGA to share some of that public investment as well.
Okay. Yeah, because there's, there's a lot of, or burdening on, on resident, you know, for a long term. And then as far as the board being introduced and all, and sitting, and also the board is the one that would vote to increase the mil from where it currently where it's at right now. That's not, or it's just going to stay at the 66 mils.
Well, that's, that is the max, actually.
That's the max, okay.
Yeah.
Now, what, if it's 40 years, have you, have you guys considered anything in the, maybe 42, 45 mils?
If I may, Mr. Douglas, just to note, because this service plan is revised, 40 years has been consistent in the city's model service plan. As the debt limitation term, that's the length of time that the district can impose the mil levy to collect for the debt, but not necessarily the term of the bond. I'm not sure what those may be. That, that itself may be 30 years, but I believe the 40 years is intended to allow freedom for the district to fund it as it sees fit, possibly refinance, et cetera.
Right. And that's where I'm going to with the, with the 40 years is the opportunity to reestablish more debt within those, within that term as well. So I know he's 66. I know that's a limit, but then based on the way the law is too, you can also increment those up, maybe two or three, based on maintenance and operation as well. I've seen it before, so.
Okay. I think it would, I think that would require a service plan amendment.
So.
Which means the, the council would have to approve that service plan amendment. That couldn't be done by the board of the Metropolitan District.
So with the 66 mil, that's, let's set that area at 194.319. I'm, I'm just estimating here, a little bit under 200 mils for total.
Including the GID?
Including the GID, correct?
Yes.
All right, so all the questions I have right now, thanks.
Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
When you were in front of us on September 16th going over the annexation proposal, you had a paragraph that was going to be inserted into the service plan regarding refinancing of debt.
Right.
Can you point me to the section number on that paragraph in the service plan?
Yes, that, that language was kind of back and forth debated with your outside counsel. It ended up in 6A under the financial plan. So the prior, it's the last sentence, I believe. Is that where it got put in, Robert? The, "Prior to the issuance of any bond issued, the district shall provide a copy of an opinion of bond counsel acceptable to the city stating that bond issued satisfies this service plan and the requirements of state law."
That is the language. I did not see it in 6A.
Oh.
I don't, don't doubt that it's in there. You mentioned, Councilman Douglas, that the bonds were determined to be 40-year, but looking at the pro forma from DA Davidson, it lists at the very top of it as a 30-year bond. Can you explain that discrepancy between what DA Davidson programmed out for the pro forma versus what you guys are trying to do on a 40-year bond?
You know what?
Mike Sullivan, DA Davidson Companies, 1550 Market Street, Denver, Colorado, 80202. That is an error in the title, unfortunately. The plan is consistent going out to 2060, showing the 40-year term, as is required in the service plan debt formula. Apologize for that typo.
Thank you. I'd like to return back to the paragraph that we talked about earlier. I'm still trying to find that in 6A. I didn't find that.
The, the last sentence of that paragraph? This was what I printed from the packet tonight before I got here.
Right. Specifically, the, the paragraph that you had mentioned back on the 16th of September was in reference to refinancing the debt, not on issuance of any bond issue, but there was to be a paragraph included in there, which I'm looking for.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead. Yeah. So I, I know what you're talking about, Councilman. It was, we had spoken about an issue relating to that a financing plan would be submitted to the city for their review. And that was the language. And in fact, I have the language in the annexation agreement. That's on page 8, paragraph B, as, as one of the conditions of the annexation. For some reason, that I don't totally understand, because it is not an issue for us to submit our financing plan to the city. But that came back as a, a modification from your outside counsel as a strike. I don't know if you remember why that happened, Robert.
The language was negotiated to be included in there, similar to what was proposed at the, excuse me, at the annexation presentation and included in the annexation agreement. I'm looking to find where that was ultimately inserted. But I believe that the applicant's special counsel for Metro Districts and our special counsel had resolved the issue for it to be included in the final draft, and so I'm searching for that now.
There was, there was in fact no issue that we would be willing to include it.
So what I'm looking for is something that specifies your agreement, should you decide to refinance those bonds, to have additional transparency. That's what was conveyed on September 16th that you were going to try to include, and I'm looking for something in your service plan that says that you have adhered to that statement on the 16th.
Yeah.
That you will in fact seek additional transparency on the refinance of any district debt. There may be other questions. While you guys look for it, Mayor, if you want to go somewhere else and come back.
Any other questions from the council concerning the service plan or the Metro District? Douglas, you have another question?
I'll wait till. I had a question within the service plan, just to ask as far as the structure of the board.
Yes, sir.
And with turning this over to the residents, what's, what's the point of turning this over to a certain percentage? Is it 50% build out, 65% build out?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Alan Pogue. I'm special counsel for the proponent of the district. There is no, there is no percentage that triggers turnover. If you move into the district or buy property in the district and you're registered to vote in Colorado, you're eligible to, you're an eligible elector immediately. And so at the next election cycle that comes around, you can run. So it can, it can turn over as quickly as two years after formation or four years after formation, depending on how the terms of the board are staggered.
Okay. So do you have any structure right now as far as how the board is going to be set up? Is it going to be a board of five?
Be a board of five.
And then is this just one Metro District or is there, could be subs?
There are three total. They'll each have their own board of directors. I would imagine that initially the same five individuals were served on the boards of all three. That's pretty typical, prior to residences being constructed or commercial facilities being constructed.
So you're saying with that, within, after one year, someone being a resident, they can apply or just?
Well, it's just like running for city council. Every two years, you guys have elections. If you're eligible to run, you can run. There's nothing that stops you. There's, there's no, it's not like the Common Interest Ownership Act where developer can control up until a certain percentage of the units have been sold. It doesn't work that way. It's, it's exactly the way the city council elections are held.
And that's been, that's been some of the issues is, is residential control and then making those decisions. And a lot of these Metro Districts have had developers on them for many years, and then a certain percentage that is written in some of these agreements did not happen. So just making sure going forward that it's clear and transparent that you guys are going to operate a lot different than.
It's, it's set up to be, I mean, and again, just like city council, if, if, not to, if all of you chose to resign and no one wanted to run, you wouldn't have a council. They can't make people run for the board, but they're eligible the minute they buy property or move in as renters, as long as they're registered to vote in Colorado. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for council?
Can I just make a, oh, I'm sorry.
For the applicant?
Can I just speak to this issue for a quick second to Councilman Douglas? For years, and, and I'm sure Alan would, would attest to this, developers would meet with these boards at their attorney's offices, right? And in most cases, those weren't real nearby the project. That doesn't really give people an opportunity to understand what's going on. And the provision that you have in here that requires these district meetings to take place in the city, I, I actually think is probably the best because it brings, you know, that, that's, that's transparency in terms of having it, you know, localized like that. To Alan's point, it's hard sometimes to force people to run for things. But, you know, if you feel like that there is, you know, a need to serve, people should be encouraged to run for these positions, and hopefully they will.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions of the applicant, did anybody find the verbiage that Mr. Hughes was looking for? Mr. Attorney?
We did not find it in the document as presented, but believe that language was negotiated between the parties that did not make it in, and believe that it could be included as a condition of, excuse me, as a condition of approval with the resolution tonight. We had negotiated language, believe similar to what had been presented. There had been some concern from the district's prior counsel on Metro Districts about where the certification came from, but we believe we had resolved that. And so it would be slightly different from what's in the annexation, but the annexation agreement potentially, but the substance would be.
About this, I'll let the motion maker insert that language.
Thank you. It would just be a motion to approve the resolution of the condition to include the required language from the annexation agreement.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this matter? Come on up. State your name and address for the record.
Here, Muserna 14122, East 100, Second Place, Commerce City, Colorado. Just one question. In all of this conversation, what type of energy are we going to have? Is it going to be solar if we're supposed to be mineral-free by that time? Or these buildings going to have solar energy to power some of the stuff that needs to be powered and everything that they do there? And one other thing is, what I hear is money being spent in perspective when it comes to building things. But old Commerce City and areas that need to be annexed are not being annexed. And that's in between the railroad tracks, again, from 72nd to 88th or 84th, one of the two. We keep getting the excuses that it costs too much. But in the last 20 years, we've been spending money left and right. Yet we have an area that needs to be annexed, and we don't do it. We have a blighted area that still is blighted. We have people that come in, can plan all of this, but they can't see the areas that need assistance in Commerce City and come up with a plan. If we're going to do what you're going to do tonight, you have to look at that. The further you get ahead up there, the lesser the equality of life down here. Schools, we still have two piers up north. Down here, state board takes over the high school. You have to look at the future also. 2045, we keep hearing it, and it went from 2040 to 2045. Everything that has been promised is not in effect. It was supposed to improve life down here, reduce taxes, and they just keep going up. I understand the competition for property, but we have to look at the life that we really want. I heard people, from the mayor on down, that this was going to be worthwhile. $300 million bond issue or whatever for the infrastructure, and then it would pay for itself. Well, it hasn't. People were promised the respect of longevity and to be safe at night in what they breathe. We're not getting it. All we need is a little bit of time and a little bit more planning. If you have problems with this area and you need it for industrial area, tell the community that. But at least build homes up there that they can afford after the city takes them over. If it's too expensive, then build it into an industrial area. But give the people that have given you the opportunity to start Commerce City and be 36 miles square. The opportunity to have a little better life up north. Build some homes up there for them. They deserve it. And I know that it's hard to not think about it. But as you're here, like I said before, I know the majority of you, but I don't know you. Because I know what has been promised and what hasn't been accomplished. I hear a little bit here and a little bit there, but it's all about money. It's not about people and what we're bringing in and how we're going to improve the old city to accomplish what was supposed to be accomplished. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to? Anyone else in the audience who would like to testify during this hearing? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, before.
All right. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-86. Counsel is seated.
Mr. Davis?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-86. Will the city attorney read the title?
Yes. Resolution 2019-86, Resolution approving the consolidated service plan for the Third Creek Metropolitan Districts number one through three and the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Commerce City and the Third Creek Metropolitan Districts numbers one through three in case MD 11019. And Mayor Ford, may I just note, there was discussion about adding the...
Yes, sir.
The condition, if that would be part of the motion to...
I'm sorry, Attorney. Yes, Barbara, allow that.
Do you want to amend your motion there, Rick?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you allow that?
Yes. I made my motion to allow the verbiage of the staff once they get in there.
Okay with the second?
Yes.
All right. Motion, the second title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. For the nays, can I please have a show of hands? Two. All right. For the record, motion is carried. Now it takes us to ordinance Z 958-19, V 90-19, and Resolution 2019-13, Adams 14 School District rezoning. Tonight's third public hearing will be consolidated public hearing on the cases that I just mentioned. I remind the council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, not to express opinions or indicate how they will vote. I'll open that public hearing and invite the staff forward to make their presentation.
Good evening tonight, Honorable Mayor, members of council here. We have three cases with one presentation, all tied together in a certain order that we'll talk about, but they are Z 958-19, V 90-19, and then S 748-19 for properties at, along Brighton Road at 68, 6827, 71, 97, 95 Brighton Road, also 4625, 68th Avenue with the Adams County School District 14 is the applicant. So the summary request of the three cases, the first case is to rezone a portion of those properties, and we'll show them here in just a moment, from commercial to public, to vacate some old alleys and right-ofways that go back, at least on paper, about 100 years, and then consolidate all of those parcels into one lot to allow a new conforming and a legal parcel that the school district needs. And then the current zoning, as we referenced, is mostly public, a little bit C2. The future land use in the comprehensive plan is public as well. And here you see the vicinity map. The area in question is this, this large parcel that has the little, I guess, the piece that sticks up there in the middle. But you'll see to the, it is part of the Adams City and Adams Heights neighborhoods, the old riggy oil property to the south, Brighton Road, US 85 to the east. We have the fire district facility to the north here, and then we have residential to the north and west, to the west, and to the south as well. The future land use plan does call it out to be a school site identified here in the middle, the blue with the symbol, the flag there for a school. And then also relevant for the case is the stationary and master plan, which was approved by council several years ago for the station area. Again, the school site caught out here in the bottom blue for a future school redevelopment. So the applicant's request tonight is asking for these three land use approvals in order to obtain a clean title commitment and then to consolidate all the parcels for future educational development. That educational development would consist of a new elementary school and also relocated Alsup Elementary School, part of Phase One, and then a updated or new Adams City Middle School as part of Phase Two. Right now, there's funding in place for the Alsup Elementary, preliminary estimates for that to be opened in fall of 2021. Now, it's important to know that schools within the state of Colorado, they're approved to the state level and not the local level. And so therefore, the development plan, the site plan, any architectural reviews, those are handled entirely through the state. The local jurisdiction does not have control over those. The local jurisdiction does have control over access points and overall drainage and things like that. Now, within your packets, you had some illustrations of the, some conceptual architectural renderings of the new school that were included from the architect and from 14, just for, to kind of give you an FYI of what they're envisioning for that elementary school. So some background and history, this site does have both. It was part of one of the original communities, Adams City, that composed Commerce City way back and incorporated in 1903, hoping to be the county seat for Adams County, and then that did not happen. Brighton became the county seat, and then Adams City was de-incorporated. Of course, Adams City High School began sometime shortly after the state became, or right around that, when the state became part of the U.S., with several additions occurring through the, over the past century. And the high school remained this location until it was closed in 2009, in which case they relocated. The new high school was built over at 72nd and Quebec. Mostly the existing site has been demolished. And then as part of the station area in 2013, this site was identified to house the relocated Alsup Elementary and Adams City Middle School sites to allow for those sites on 72nd Avenue being closer to the future station area to be redeveloped to accommodate that transit-oriented development. Adams 14 did apply. They did receive a BEST grant to fund the new construction of Alsup, and as I alluded to, potential opening in fall of 2021. The school district will apply for another BEST grant for Adams City Middle School. No opening date set at this time. Also on the site, we'll see here in aerial in just a moment, the existing distribution and service buildings. Those are currently in operation. They would remain on the site as well. So this is the aerial. I guess when the site was a build-out, I know that some of you attended this school, have close recollections of it. Others are familiar with it, but this shows, again, before the school was demolished, when it was in full use, the distribution and the related warehouse facility down on the southwest corner, that part is the part that will remain. Here's how the property looks today, just basically not even a shell of its old self. Most of it has been torn down. The track remains. There's a couple of buildings off to the east and then, and a couple of the tennis courts, but for the most part, it's now a empty and vacant site. Here's some current sites, pictures. Again, some of the old parking is, is there, is crumbling, but then there's a couple of the buildings. And then that bottom right picture shows the distribution facility that would remain. So the proposed conditions here, this shows again how it would look, envisioned to look with the new Alsup and also with the new future middle school in place. Again, the Alsup is, has money in store. The future middle school would be at a separate phase, but it does kind of show you where the school district is envisioning the elementary school to be placed. And then with shared recreation fields between them. And then just a little bit of a close-up again that the applicant provided for us that shows the Alsup Elementary layout with parking and related amenities. Now going to the three cases at hand, this map shows a lot, but what's important is the coloring of the map. So in blue, as we've alluded to, is the area that is existing public, so by far, most of the site is zone public. However, there are those four parcels along Brighton that are still zone commercial. There's zone C2 left over from an earlier day. And in order to consolidate all of these into one, the city does not allow multiple zonings on a single parcel, so those parcels do need to be rezoned. And this went before Planning Commission. Planning Commission did overall support this request. They did find it to be in conformance with both the comprehensive plan and the stationary and master plan for educational uses. They did feel like the existing commercial parcels are of such a small size that traditional commercial development would be prohibited. And in fact, the school district has no plans to construct commercial uses on those parcels. It would, as I alluded to, help make the site conforming. And then overall, the new educational facilities can help with stabilizing and improving the neighborhood by showing reinvestment within Adams City and Adams Heights areas. So there are zoning approval criteria within the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission did find that area or find a zoning request to be in conformance with those approval criteria. Moving on to the vacation plat, so again, it has to do with vacating old right-of-way. And because this area is so old, it goes back over 100 years. Originally, this was envisioned to be its own little community with its own little streets. And there are some, most have been vacated through the years, going back to 1920s, 40s, and 50s. However, there are four remnant right-of-ways that have been identified. And they are identified here. And then, so basically parcel one is an old portion of Court Place that you see up here. Parcel two is this longer piece here. It's an old Third Avenue that was platted at the turn of the century. We have a little piece here of an alley between Third and Fourth Avenues that's still left. And then we have a little piece here east-west of Cleveland Place. Now again, if you remember the aerials, those roads don't exist in real life. They're strictly found on, on paper and old plats that go back over 100 years. So in terms of the vacation plat analysis from Planning Commission, they did support this request, saying that it would help to clean up old and confusing plating issues. There are no existing utilities utilizing those right-of-way. And then existing right-of-way is of no use to the city and in fact has been utilized by the school district for, for decades. Again, there's vacation plat approval criteria in the Land Development Code that Planning Commission found that should be in compliance with. And then finally, with the rezoning in place and the vacation of those right-of-ways in place, the applicant has proposed then to consolidate that entire area into one new lot to accommodate their educational campus, if you will. And this is just a page showing the proposed subdivision plat. Planning Commission does support this request. It is consistent with city requirements and is appropriate size and layout, does help clean up old and outdated parcel lines, will allow redevelopment, and then will bring the potential use into conformity with, with codes. And again, finally, there are approval criteria for subdivisions in Article III that Planning Commission found were met. There was required public notification needed for this, these particular properties, and those were met. And then this is dated August 28th, when the packet was done, but even as today, staff has received no requests for additional information or objection to these application requests. This did go to Planning Commission October 1st. They did vote five to zero to forward all three requests there, you see them there, to city council with approval and their recommendation. And that concludes staff's presentation. Both applicants representative and representatives from the school district are here for council as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time from the council? Mr. Wardiola?
Yeah, thank you. This is more for, just for future, what, do we own Brighton Boulevard right there?
Brighton is C dot there. Both that and then US 85 obviously is as well.
Okay. Is there any talks of expanding that road? Because if you go four o'clock, five o'clock, I drive it every day, the traffic from that light is all the way down.
At 69 there?
Past the 68th.
68.
Right. And I'm looking at the parent drop-off. Imagine around that time, is there any talks about what we could do? It's just, it's going to get worse and worse.
I know that, that would obviously be part of the Phase Two for the middle school side. I do know that the C dot in their referral has requested a traffic study when that middle school gets built. So they will be looking at that to see how it impacts that whole stretch, to see if any roadway improvements are needed from their side for sure.
Just keep that in mind. I know it's the second phase, but that, that road gets really bad.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Teeter?
Sorry, Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion if you'd like.
All right. Is there any other, no, we don't need a motion yet. We're in the middle of a public hearing. Is there any other questions for the staff at this time from the council? Seeing none, the applicant is present. Is there anything you'd like to come up and add to the presentation or say about this case?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Stephen Mumblow, project manager with the district's owners representative, Cooperative Strategies. And I do not have much to add to Mr. Tim's presentation. It was very thorough, I felt. I just wanted to come here to say thank you for, for hearing these proposals. And I did want to address the traffic study. We are reviewing impacts for the queuing for the cars and the drop-offs, looking at things like signals, expanded turn lanes, and it's, it's going to be warranted when the middle school is constructed. And so we are planning to roll those costs into the following grant for the middle school. And I wanted to also note that the existing structures on the site will also be handled through the middle school grant, the abatement and demolition of those structures. So when the middle school is constructed, it will be a, a clean site with the track and field to be relocated north as, as indicated on the site plan. So that's really all I have. The district is also here. I have the director of operations as well as the director of communication, so we're available to address any questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone on council that would have any questions or comments to the applicant at this time? Mr. Teeter? No?
Well, I'll just bring this up, just, the fire district is already planning for this expansion, and we are, they've already in place, have plans in place to put a new fire district building across the street where the old one was at, just a little to the east of the existing firehouse there now. That will be turned into a new firehouse over there.
And Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I had a question for the applicant as far as the soccer field and football field and baseball field. Is any of the area going to be lit as far as lighting, the surrounding neighborhood?
So there will be lighting for security at the parking lots as well as the trash enclosures, but there will not be lighting at the athletic fields.
Okay. And then as far as the plans, I know as far as this lot here, I'll hold off. Thank you. But thank you for answering about the lighting.
Of course.
All right. Is there any other questions for the applicant from the council at this time? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on the matter before us?
Thelma Cole, I live at 5841 East 67th Place, Commerce City. I would like to know when the old school, the reason they wanted to move the old school was, and this is what they said, they wanted to move it because it was too close to a busy highway. Well, if you did that, why are you putting another school in the same spot?
I'd have to bring the, after you're done, if that's your only question, I'll bring the applicant, I'll bring the applicant back up to try to answer that question for you, Thelma. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Could the applicant come up and do your best to answer the question posed to us
Yes, I think we can speak to that. So as part of the BEST planning process, there's a very thorough planning review that's done where you assess the condition of all your facilities as well as all the properties and assets that the district owns. And so along with a lot of district involvement, cooperative strategies as education K-12 consultants, we, we look at the tax base of the community. We look at census, demographic modeling to show where families are moving and, and you know, where families are moving away from, and we use that to inform our long-term planning decisions. So the, the BEST grant was written for Alsup because it was identified as, as high-risk, foundation issues, structural, health and safety issues of, of the highest priority in the state's mind. And the old Adams City High School property made sense, being that it's so close to the current Alsup school. It prevented any rezoning decisions that needed to, to happen. All the kids that currently go to Alsup are still in, are still in range to go to this new location. So it made a lot of sense from that perspective, as well as the large site, being able to combine things like bus loops and athletic fields that could be utilized by both a middle school and an elementary school. school and an elementary school. You know, that, that also led to this becoming a viable opportunity for us to design and, and expand efficiently. So John, would you like to add anything to that?
The only thing that I can add, because this predates my tenure with the school district, I think is a very fine point that has been raised. But my assumption is that the high school generally, with a high school, you'll see far much more traffic with cars than you will with a middle school or elementary school.
Thank you both. There was another person in the audience had their hand up. Come on up.
The Hermosena one-four-one-two-two, East Hundred and Second Place, Commerce City, Colorado. I lived there for twenty-eight years, right across from the busing station. That area there has been, as far as the school system, has been ping pong back and forth. They say no traffic. Well, you got RTD there. There's going to be traffic. If you're going to improve the high school or, and the middle school in perspective to how they work together, you have to improve the neighborhood, for God's sakes. I don't see anybody or administration or anybody asking for grants to bring up the quality of these children that have to go to these schools. If you take a look at Cahagan, right behind there, when it crossed over Brighton Boulevard, the only thing that's stopping these kids from learning sometimes at night is noise that comes from there. There's no wall there to, for these kids to be able to sleep, yet we want them to learn and have everything ready. Improve the whole neighborhood. That's what it was supposed to do when we moved that school over there. We're not doing it. Come on, people. If you plan, plan it right. And thi- this is what's happening. School District fourteen, they were gonna put a school over there in between the two railroad tracks. The city had deals there. They got the property. Well, they found out that, hey, with the trains that we have problems with, those kids wouldn't be able to go to those schools. Rose Hill was the same thing, but you've got industry there. These neighborhoods need those roads to be widened a little bit, have less traffic through Colorado Boulevard in the direction going to deliver their trash. That's another one. Improve that whole area. Annex that whole area. Don't wait until you have to build Seventy-Fourth because of RTD that now won't supply anything the way they did down south. We always get the lower part, the after effect, but yet we don't struggle for that. I'm not complaining and I'm, these kids need those schools because of RTD and what's gonna happen at the dog track. Overcrowdiness is because of lack of planning on what we want for the future. And these kids need all the help they can get. But do it and do it right. I can understand the school district asking you for help with permits and this and that, but what is the total need of that community? To make this city prosper the way it should be? That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I saw one more hand in the back.
God bless you. My name is Lucy Molina, sixty-six fifty Clermont. Thank you so much, all of you, for your service and for everything you guys have done for us. I do wanna just, I live right there. It's right across the street pretty much from my house. I am also a part of the DAC. I'm part of the parent, the parent group for the district for Adams fourteen, and I'm also the chairperson for the Unified Improvement Plan, which is something, which is why I volunteered for the district and, and, cause I live right there. I, I am really concerned and you know that, John, cause this year, you know, we, it has confirmed that SunCor is right like next, next to there, and it is emitting eight-hundred-and-fifty tons of cyanide per year. So that affects the children there. That's affecting my family, which is like, you know, we're like right behind there. So having all the school, the schools in that area like that, that's very concerning to, to me as a parent, that my kids are in that part of that district, and also because I live right next to that. The, the traffic as well, that, that's true. It's, it's, there's a lot of traffic there. So I do hope that maybe, I have asked before for devices or something from City Council that we could provide for that community that could let us know, you know, it's, it's, it's not safe to go outside. Take your pets inside. The kids shouldn't be playing in the playgrounds, playing football or soccer outside, stuff like that. So I, I do hope that the district, and I know, you know I will be part of that group, and I am the chairperson for the, for that, the, I, the Unified Improvement Plan. So that is one of my concerns. I do hope that the, this council and the future council is able to put, put the people first for once. I do hope that also in the district, also our district. We are the lowest performing district in the state. We almost lost our only high school, and we have a lot, a lot of issues that we need to work on, just like Mr. Serna said. Again, I thank all of you for your services and for everything you guys do and the love that you have for our city. I hope that we can move forward in doing better decisions, not only with the, partnering with the city as well as the district, that better our community and our children, cause those are my kids right there. Thank you.
All right, before you leave, I got a question. Concerning the rezoning ordinance, are you supportive of that or against it?
You know, I, I do need to study more about it, okay? I am part of the, the, again, part of the DAC. It is, I have to, I really need to educate myself more about it, Mayor, and really understand what is the best for our, the people, for the children. I wanna do what's right. I wanna, I wanna support what's right. I know as an, as a city, we are the city of commerce. Comercio to me is like industry, commerce, money, you know, corporations, all this stuff. But I really wanna make sure that we do, I wanna support something that protects my family, that protects the children, that protects the elders, all my neighbors that are living there. I have a lot of friends that are disabled down the street. So I mean, I live on that block where the girl, the homicide-suicide, that was my neighbor. That's my neighbor. Daisy is my neighbor. She was my neighbor. Her mom is my friend. We went to church together the other day. So those are situations that are.
I understand all of that. This hearing is on the rezoning of the properties that were described and removing some lot lines. And so we're taking testimony for, for people that are against this rezoning happening or supportive of the rezoning happening. And all the other things, I don't disagree with you that have challenges, but the testimony tonight and have you come up and testify, it's, I'm trying to help the council out and myself by understanding what your position is concerning the ordinance that's before us on the zoning of the property that the school district owns. And, and I, you're, you're, you're not for it or against it. Is that my understanding? All right.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify during this public hearing? Saying no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. All righty. We need to deal with the findings and facts of the Planning Commission, case Z nine-five-eight. What are council's desires? Mr. Teeter?
This is gonna take a certain verdict here, Mayor, that we're gonna have to put on this?
No, just a motion to approve the findings and facts of the Planning Commission on Z nine-eight-nine-five-eight dash one-nine.
Like the facts and findings of the Planning Commission on Z nine-eight-five-five-eight, that we said?
Nine, nine-five-eight dash one-nine.
Okay. There I am. Nine-eight-five dash one-nine, yes.
I have a motion to approve the facts and findings of the Planning Commission on case Z dash five, nine-five-eight dash one-nine. Is there a second, Mr. Douglas?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for the desires of the council to introduce ordinance or not introduce ordinance Z nine-five-eight dash one-nine. Councilwoman Frank.
Motion to introduce ordinance Z dash nine-five-eight dash one-nine and approve on first reading by council, seated.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance Z nine-five-eight dash one-nine. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance Z nine-five-eight one-nine and ordinance rezoning from C two commercial to public. The property described in Exhibit A attached here two and made apart here, I've located it six-eight-two-seven, six-eight-seven-one, six-eight-seven-nine and six-eight-nine-five, Brighton Road, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. For the record, motion is carried unanimous by the council this evening. Now I'm open for the desires of council on the findings and facts of the Planning Commission in case V dash nine-zero dash one-nine. Mr. Teeter?
I move that V dash nine-zero-one-nine presentation be recommended for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second, Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to, on the findings and facts of the Planning Commission in case V dash nine-zero dash one-nine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we need to consider the introduction of ordinance V nine-zero dash one-nine. Councilman Hearst?
I motion to introduce case V dash nine-zero dash one-nine on first reading by council, seated.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance V nine-zero dash one-nine on first reading, council, seated. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Ordinance V ninety dash one-nine and ordinance vacating various rights of way on the property described in Exhibit A attached here two and made apart here, consisting of Court Place, Cleveland Place, Third Avenue and Third Avenue Alley located within four-six-two-five East Sixty-eighth Avenue, City of Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, passed unanimous by the council, seated this evening. Now I'm open for the council to consider approval of Resolution twenty-nineteen dash one-one-three. Councilwoman Frank?
Motion to approve Resolution two-zero-one-nine dash one-one-three.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
Attorney, please read that title.
Resolution twenty-nineteen one-one-three, resolution approving subdivision plat in case S seven-four-eight one-nine.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Brings us to resolutions. We have Resolution twenty-nineteen dash one-one-six, which would be approving purchase agreement for the Haunted Building. I'd like to invite Troy Smith to make his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're here to present you with a purchase and sale agreement for a property located at seven-one-one-one East Fifty-sixth Avenue, commonly referred to as the Haunted The city council previously gave direction to the city manager to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement. Just a few details on the building at that address. The building's currently owned by the county. It's about sixteen thousand square feet in size, and the building sits on a lot that's approximately two-point-eight acres. Couple of photographs of the facility. We'll, we'll talk about the users that appear in the, in the two pictures on the top in just a moment. This is the second floor of the building where there is office space in the condition you see here in the photographs. A couple of, of the sale points related to the agreement that's before you for consideration tonight. The purchase price for the property is five-hundred thousand dollars. The required earnest money for the property is seventy-five hundred. There are two current tenants in the building. The Head Start School has tenancy through seven-ten of twenty-twenty without any rent as part of the agreement. And then they have an option to extend for one year with the city having the alternative of charging rent at twenty percent below the market rate if they were to exercise that option. And then the second tenant is the Food Bank of the Rockies, and it has tenancies at the current lease rate through twenty-twenty-four as part of the purchase and sale agreement. Importantly, there's a due diligence period of a hundred and eighty days in an effort for the city to be able to hire a firm that will conduct a facility assessment during that period. The city may terminate the agreement for any reason or no reason at all before the expiration of that period. The purpose of setting the period out that far was at the time we began this discussion, the city did not have a firm on retainer to conduct that facility assessment. We now do through our Public Works Department, and that process could begin almost immediately. And so I don't anticipate necessarily needing the full one-hundred-and-eighty days, but we do have that provision in the agreement. So the resolution that is before you tonight would authorize the mayor to sign for the purchase and sale of the building, the authorization of the transfer of the earnest money, and giving the city manager or his designee authorization to negotiate and take the actions necessary to effectuate the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the council may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone on council that has any questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Hearst?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Can you, can you discuss as part of your presentation, our intentions that we've discussed in great detail leading up to this process and what we kinda see the vision for this building being?
Well, the, the long-term vision of the property is probably some different use, but for the, the time being, the uses that we have discussed with the city council include providing space for service entities or nonprofits to provide service to the community at potentially below-market rate rent. There is a commercial kitchen that was operated and certified previously in the facility. While that certification is expired, we believe that the grease trap that's there is functioning and, and that with some degree of effort, that facility could be put back up and, and be certified by the state, which would allow potentially for some commercial kitchen, business incubator type of space that we have received a lot of inquiries about through our Economic Development Department. Long-term, the council has discussed, you know, that this is a good financial investment. The property's located in a, in a location where commercial uses in the future are probably going to be beneficial for the community. So I, I believe that would summarize the discussions that I've been present for with the council related to this piece of property and the potential for its purchase.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we highlight that the, the sole purpose that we've discussed for the purchase of this property is. is a community incubator for small businesses, nonprofits, a place to, um, hopefully incubate businesses that need, um, need to get off the ground, kind of move maybe from the home business to more of a commercial setting and kind of be the go-between between that, or even just getting a business off the ground. Uh, and I think the commercial kitchen, um, is, has great potential, uh, for food trucks or anybody who's trying to, uh, prepare large amounts of food for catering and things such as that. But let's, let's also make it very clear that this is going to be an investment. Uh, purchase price is five hundred thousand dollars. We, we had great discussion about, um, overall budget that we've set aside for twenty twenty being a full million dollars. So, we fully anticipate five hundred thousand dollar purchase price with five hundred thousand dollars in additional investment to bring it up to, um, the level of our expectations before we turn it over to the community. And, and I think that's important to note because, you know, is that hundred day due diligence period will help us establish the investments necessary to bring this up to a, a quality building, um, that we would be willing to turn over to our community for this, um, for this purpose of trying to get small businesses and nonprofits off the ground or give them a, a place to operate, um, commercially. So, I just wanted to make sure we highlight those additional or that intention, those uses for this building. I think it's a great opportunity for this city to, um, invest back into this portion of the community at what is also appears to be a great financial decision for the city as well.
All right, Mr. Huesman?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to know the facility condition assessment that's going to be conducted. Will that also include a Level Three ADA study?
Sorry, Mr. Huesman, I don't know what a Level Three eighty-eight study is, but, um, that would be a-
American Disabilities Act? Are we going to actually study that as well and make sure that the building is up to code for modern, uh, American Disability Act regulations?
I would assume that would be part of the assessment whether the facility was or was not within conformance with those regulations, yes.
Okay, how about an energy audit, will that be conducted as well?
I don't know the answer to that.
All right, my recommendation would be that those two line items be added on to whatever contract you sign with the firm that you're going to, to ensure that we know what we're getting whenever we go to purchase this building.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
Mr. Teeter.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of points here, uh, Mr. Hurst and Mr. Smith was correct in what they presented. Another one, the big thing was to keep the food bank here in Commerce City. There was, uh, they were looking for a place, they were gonna have to move out of Commerce City, someplace else in the county, and we chose to use, uh, that building also to keep the food bank in the present location for the people of Commerce City in this area and the Head Start Group.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this issue? Saying none. All right, now, I'm up for the council's desires concerning resolution twenty nineteen dash one one six. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Hurst?
I'd like to present a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one one six.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Frank.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second approving the purchase agreement for the Haunton Building by this council. All those in favor signify. Mr. Attorney, you want to read the title?
Resolution twenty nineteen one one six, resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement for the property at seven one 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 East Fifty Sixth Avenue and providing for related matters.
All right, now, I think, uh, I have an amendment. No? The, are we all right? Just keep going, all right? I just want to make sure that I don't skip anything that you might have to bring to the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we go to ordinances on first reading. I'd like to invite Dominic Martinelli, um, forward. Oh, you want to take a recess, all right, hang on, Dominic. Um, I've had a request, uh, I will allow for a five-minute recess. The time is eight fourteen, we'll be back at eight twenty. All right.
Go that fast.
They're in the corner right behind me. Go get one. I thank you, my bladder thanks you. My kidneys thank you.
Pete's, please. All right. Dominic, um, as soon as everybody gets settled, why don't you go ahead with your presentation?
All right, thank you, honorable mayor and council. Um, I will be presenting ordinance twenty-two thirty-five tonight, which is, um, a comprehensive rewrite of our oil and gas regulations. So, we're gonna start with some basic context of background and how we got here. Um, in two thousand nine, um, oil and gas was regulated in the city for the first time. Um, it was allowed with a use by permit in industrial and agricultural zone districts. In two thousand twelve, there were some significant updates to the oil and gas regulations. Um, there were some minor updates adopted in two thousand eighteen that were mostly process-related. In April, we had a study session with council on the potential impacts of the code on Senate Bill one eighty-one. Um, in later April, um, Senate Bill one eighty-one was signed by the governor, and we did have a number of focus group meetings that were specifically directed on policy updates related to oil and gas regulations, um, and feedback from the focus group was incorporated into this process. In July, staff began the, the process to amend the LDC in response to Senate Bill one eighty-one and a number of other factors. Um, we adopted an impact fee on August fifth, and September third, Adams County passed a series of regulations, and we held two study sessions with city council in September and October. Uh, we also held one with Planning Commission and had a Planning Commission adoption hearing on October thirtieth. So, just a quick update or, um, summary of Senate Bill one eighty-one. It gave local government much more authority to regulate surface impacts of oil and gas development. Uh, major highlights of the bill include modifying state preemption on a number of factors, expressly authorizing local regulation of well pads, reforming the COGCC emission, um, among a number of other things. As part of the study sessions, um, that we held with city council, we established objectives of what the code update should be and what should be obtained through this process. Uh, the first one was to utilize Senate Bill one eighty-one authority to zone oil and gas, not only through zone district regulation, but it potentially setbacks, uh, reverse setbacks from existing or plugged and abandoned well sites to incorporate other powers granted to local governments through Senate Bill one eighty-one, define approval criteria for alternative site location analyses, and evaluation of process and approval, incorporating feedback that was received during the focus group meetings, evaluating additional feedback provided from the public, industry, and other regulatory agencies, evaluating financial assurances and fees, codifying the best management practices, which were pulled from the, um, regional operator agreement that was signed with extraction oil and gas, and to incorporate meaning, meaningful health, safety, and general welfare protections. So, we're gonna do a brief overview of the current code, and then we'll get into how some of those objectives were eventually incorporated into draft regulations. So, currently, our code requires oil and gas permits as administrative review. It's allowed in all zone districts in the city with an oil and gas permit. There are specific impacts and regulations that are in twenty-one fifty-two sixty-six of the Land Development Code, which focus primarily on surface impacts, dust mitigation, um, water quality type concerns. All operators are required to sign an extraction agreement as part of each oil and gas permit, and a regional operator agreement is an optional step that an operator may choose to go down. In terms of the proposed regulations, we're gonna go article by article here and look at what significant changes were made to each section based on the objectives that were stated previously. The approval criteria was significantly reworked. The language is tailored much similarly to a conditional use permit, evaluating the impacts of an oil and gas facility and, and how the city should regulate it. We found many parallels to our existing conditional use permit process and pulled a lot of the approval criteria in the language in terms of staff's review of an oil and gas facility. Uh, we did add additional language on reducing impacts on health, safety, general welfare, and the environment. There's a lot of language that is very similar to this, which is in response to Senate Bill one eighty-one and some of the language that's used there. There is an additional provision on lapse and forfeiture, so there's a three-year window from the time an oil and gas permit is issued to drill all wells approved within the permit. If all of those wells aren't drilled within three years, uh, the remaining wells on that permit would lapse, and the applicant would need to reapply for an oil and gas permit in order to drill the remaining wells. Transferability, the oil and gas permits do not run with the land, and any changes in tenancy, ownership, or management will require the issuance of a new oil and gas permit. A significant change that was made to Article Three was the initial assessment process. So, in response to the alternative site location analysis and reviewing the potential surface locations, prior to receiving a permit was a step that we wanted to achieve. Uh, we established a requirement for what's called a mandatory initial assessment process. As part of that, we would require a minimum of one consultation with the city where the proposed operations in the city would be proposed and have some time to talk about best management practices and what the operators are currently doing. They would then submit an alternative site analysis as part of that process. They would need to submit a minimum of three locations to the city for the review. Staff would review proximity from all of the features that are listed on the slide, including platted or existing residential homes, schools, parks, recreation facilities, streams, high-accomplished building units, assisted living facilities, reservoirs, and areas that are unsuitable for development. streams, high-accomplished building units, assisted living facilities, reservoirs, and areas that are unsuitable for development. Staff would inform the applicant which sites are eligible, and then the applicant will be able to apply only for those sites. If a proposed location is at least two thousand feet from the criteria listed, the applicant would not need to do an alternative site location analysis. There's also a proposed change to the review process. So there is going to be a proposed two-tiered approach. So if a site is determined to be exempt from the alternative site location analysis, essentially saying that this site is far enough away from a number of the features that are designated in the setback requirements, that they would not need to go through city council and planning commission approval. Any site that's within two thousand feet of those stated criteria would need to go through a oil and gas public hearing route, which would include review by planning commission and final approval by city council. All oil and gas permits are currently administrative review unless the PUD zoning requires a CUP. So for additional clarification, changes to the Land Development Code in this regard for zoning would not apply to areas and reunion and other lands that are within a PUD that contemplates oil and gas as an existing use or a contemplated use. Change to Article five. There were significant modifications to the permits and middle requirements and the plans that operators will need to prepare. These were generally pulled from the ROA, so any existing plan that the city required, we either combined them with existing ROA requirements or added the ROA requirements that weren't in the code to this. There's also language on a third-party technical review. So understanding that there are significant amount of staff time to review some of these permits, having operators help cover the costs associated with any third-party review of an oil and gas land use application. There's additional clarification on prohibition within a floodplain. Additional provisions on site development standards, including visual mitigation, fencing, landscaping, lighting, and sign standards. There are some additional environmental standards, which include minor changes to the wildlife mitigation plan requirements, waste management plan, sanitary regulations, and stormwater management requirements. We're also taking the noise standards that were included within the regional operator agreement, which is a maximum decibel level of fifty-five or four decibels over the baseline sound conditions measured on-site during their sound study. There's an additional prohibition added on gas storage wells in addition to previously prohibited practices, which include disposal pits, commercial disposal facilities, centralized exploration and production waste facilities, subsurface disposal facilities, and injection wells. Inspections, there were some modifications made to inspections, including operator would be required to reimburse all city inspection costs that are necessary and an added authority to inspect facilities at any time without prior notice. The city also is proposing to add an air quality monitoring program as part of the code update. This would include baseline sampling of all well sites, sampling during drilling and completions, continuous air quality monitoring for the life of the well, real-time data reporting to the city. All costs would be borne by the applicant, and the applicant must select from the approved vendor list. So as part of this, the city is anticipating coming up with an RFQ or an RFP process to establish a list of approved air quality vendors for the city, which would establish a baseline and make sure that the data that we're getting is consistent and equal across the board. Additionally, there are proposed setback changes. So there's a proposed minimum setback of a thousand feet from the following. Existing residential or platted residential, high-accomplished building units, public parks or recreation facilities, not including trails or open space, sports fields, amphitheaters, and senior or assisted living facilities. And there would be a minimum five-hundred-foot setback from public water supplies and public water supply wells and reservoirs.
Sorry, I apologize for interrupting, but I just want to note, could you go back to the last slide? On that first bullet point of the setback from a thousand feet from existing residential and platted residential, I don't know if you're going to cover this later, but because we were here, I just wanted to hit that. That last part, property entitled for residential use was removed in the updated draft, so.
Yes, that's correct.
For anybody noting that, I just wanted to make that clear.
So the first map that I'll be showing you is the proposed setbacks and how it would affect land developable and land not developable. There's a difference between the first map that I'll show here and the second map. This shows the effects of only the city regulations. So this would be a thousand-foot setback from platted and existing residential, as well as the other features listed. The second map shows what the setback requirement would be in addition to the COGCC five-hundred-foot building unit setback. There is a waiver process at the state. And the major effect of this is towards the industrial areas. For industrial buildings over fifteen thousand square feet or commercial buildings over five thousand square feet, the operator could pursue a variance to reduce that amount. There are also some proposed changes to the land use table in twenty-one fifty-two hundred of the Land Development Code. It would be scaling back the number of allowed zone districts to I-one, I-one-S, I-two, and I-three, and agricultural properties over ten acres in size. PUDs that specifically allow oil and gas as a use would be remained unchanged. It'd be prohibited in all commercial, residential, and public zone districts. It's currently allowed in all zone districts. So to show a map, I-one, I-one-S, I-two, and I-three, and agricultural will be allowed since the majority of the northern range is zone planning and development. Only some of these PUDs allow for oil and gas development as a conditional use permit. For those that do not, the operator would need to seek a rezoning to one of these own districts allowed. So there was a new section created in Article six as well that's proposed, twenty-one sixty-two eighty, which are additional standards for oil and gas facilities, which are intended to be implemented during the plating process. There would be a reverse setback from existing well sites to newly platted residential lots based on the well count. This ended up being the most feasible method during the previous study sessions. We had examined ways to assess the impacts of a site and found that the easiest way to implement this would be to count the number of wells on a site and then increase the setback based on the number of wells. There would also be a fifty-foot setback from any plugged and abandoned well sites. And there's additional specifications on plating requirements to denote the location of flow lines, easements, services agreements, and location of plugged and abandoned wells. There have also been a series of revisions made to Article eleven, either adding new definitions that didn't exist previously or removing definitions that the city had previously but are no longer applicable and changing some minor aspects. The city is also proposing to modify Section three of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, including additional fines for oil and gas facilities, which would be a minimum five-hundred-dollar fine for a first-time violation, thousand-dollar fine the second time, two thousand for a third, and then four or more violations would be twenty-six fifty. Best management practices, so as part of this process, a best management practice document that lives outside of the Land Development Code was contemplated. As part of these amendments, this would establish a new city best management practices where it would have more specific technical standards that would apply to oil and gas facilities. Any changes to this document, we need to go through the code amendment process, and city council would have the final approval authority. This could be amended in the future as a standalone document rather than amending the LDC. There are twenty-five specific BNP's that are proposed within the best management practices, including requirements for electric-powered permanent drilling equipment, prohibition on glycol and desiccant dehydrators, lowered loader drilling mugs, and a leak detection and repair program. There's specific prohibitions on certain chemicals during the hydraulic fracturing phase, requirement for closed loop system, and a number of other water quality standards. There's additional safety standards, pipelines required where feasible, Bradenhead monitoring requirements, flow line regulations, and a number of other provisions. There's also a requirement for an interim and final reclamation plan, which would change based on reducing the site down from the drilling and completions phase down to the production site, and then what the final reclamation plan would be when the wells are plugged and abandoned. Noise mitigation, there's additional measures regarding noise issues that would supplement the standards, visual mitigation standards, landscaping standards, and lighting standards. And there's some additional provisions like community outreach. The operator would need to maintain a list of residents within a quarter mile, a biannual update requirement to the city, and a requirement for a dedicated operator phone line, risk management assistant, incident accident reporting, safety sign standards, and an emergency response plan. There's additional insurance requirements, including stated insurance policy minimums and specified insurance types that the operator would need to hold. On October thirtieth, Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval to city council on all of these proposed changes. In addition to Planning Commission's recommendation, staff did have the opportunity to meet with some additional groups on Friday, receive comments from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, as well as Tri-County Health Department. Staff is evaluating the potential includes some of those changes and revisions that are generally minor in scope and would not change the overall policy direction. As part of this, as we keep in mind with the questions tonight and that type of thing, there is a proposal to potentially make some recommended minor changes upon second reading based on those comment letters. That being said, I'm available to answer any questions. We also have Matt Sur here tonight, who's our oil and gas special counsel, that will be able to answer more specific technical questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Martinelli. All right, does the council have any questions for staff at this time? Douglas.
Yes, Robert, you had addressed the setbacks, minimum setback of a thousand from the following. You said that to existing residential. Could you explain that with your?
Correct. An initial draft had identified that the setback would be measured as a thousand feet from existing residential units, platted residential units, and property that was entitled as a residential use for a residential use. On further analysis and discussion with stakeholders, it was determined that that would be difficult to impose, and it was walked back to where a property would simply zoned or in a status where it wasn't known how it was going to be developed exactly, wasn't really identified to a distinct point of plating, that prohibiting a oil and gas site from within that distance would not be appropriate. And so the recommendation was to limit that thousand-foot setback from existing units and property that has been platted, that has received a plat, that would identify a future residential use with a specific lot for that use.
Okay, well, there were some recommendations during our study session that would, with any platted residential would be two thousand feet, correct?
No, I believe the regulations are largely consistent, by and large consistent with what was presented and indicated at the study session and endorsed by the city council. What Mr. Martinelli identified was property or sites within two thousand feet of certain other properties would be subject to an alternative site analysis and would come to the city council for review as opposed to being allowed for a, I'm sorry, yes. If it's within two thousand feet, we'd have to go through the alternative site analysis and come to city council for approval. That's where the two thousand feet comes in.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? From the council? I think none. You have another one there, Mr. Douglas? Go ahead.
So based on recommendations that were previously presented and emailed and all, if we have any additions, it'll be noted tonight, or how's that work?
Sure, if I could, for the whole council's benefit and for the community, as far as the process for approving this ordinance. Tonight, it's up for first reading, which is the first draft that you've seen based on direction from the city council and with the planning commission's recommendation of approval. City council can take action to amend it tonight, to amend that ordinance and approve it on first reading. My recommendation is to suggest amendments that we could then take back and draft, and then council could vote on those at the time of second reading, which would be on November eighteenth to meet the council's schedule for approving this prior to Thanksgiving. This would not delay the vote beyond that night of November eighteenth, and it would give us the opportunity to make sure that we draft any amendments appropriately to incorporate them into our Land Development Code and to meet the intent that council wants to provide. That is council's option. You can do that. I'm happy to draft any amendments that any council member would want and then bring them back on the eighteenth, and you can vote on them individually. We plan to have a list of staff recommended amendments based on comments from stakeholders and referral agencies that council might consider adopting just overall as a kind of a consent amendment. Council could also require members to ask for direction, I'm sorry, submit a motion to direct staff to prepare that amendment to come back and then vote on whether we'll even take the time to write that amendment. But that said, I'm happy to just take the amendments as they come, write them, and bring them back for approval. With a written ordinance like this, which is very dense, I'll say, writing things on the fly can be very difficult and lead to potential errors and unintended consequences.
So since this was as of last Thursday drafted and all, for public view, what kind of comments have you had from the public?
I would have to defer to Mr. Martinelli, but I know that we've received written comments from the Home Builders Association, other landowners, Tri-County Health, CDPHG. I'm not sure what comments were submitted in the week prior. I believe there was an online comment form uploaded the week before the Planning Commission hearing as well, so.
That is correct. So prior to the packet being published, we received comments from API and KOGA, Extraction Oil and Gas, the Colorado Home Builder Association. There's also a posted online survey for oil and gas issues and the proposed code amendments. I believe we received about seven additional public comments as part of that. We haven't had the ability to go through in depth on those. We have received additional comment letters of that nature. Based on our initial review and assessment, some of these changes are not significant or substantial and could potentially be incorporated in a relatively easy way between now and second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Could I also clarify? Mr. McBroom reminded me that if council did not want to act on the motion tonight, direct us to make certain amendments and republish this for approval either at a special meeting or on the eighteenth. I believe that you could make approval on December second, which is your final night sitting as this council, but it would potentially push past the date on which you desired to approve this in the first place. Make sure you have all your options.
Thank you. All right, now to the list in the audience. John, you were up earlier, you want to come on up? Need your name and address for the record, please.
Mayor, honorable members of the council, John Brackney, sixty-three hundred South Yosemite or Syracuse in Greenwood Village. So I spoke to you previously, thanks for, again, an appreciation for your service. I did so three times, county commissioner, but effectively, I want to speak with you tonight from another previous job of mine, which was the CEO of the South Metro Denver Chamber. I have the authority to speak on behalf of four other leaders in the state, expressing some concern about this ordinance and hopefully your significant revisions or postponement of the decision, of course, which both are your call. I'm speaking on behalf of Bob Golden, the CEO of the South Metro Denver Chamber of Commerce, Kevin Hogan, the CEO of the Aurora Chamber of Commerce, Rob Prentice, Colorado President of the National Association of Royalty Owners, and Chuck Berry, the President of the Colorado Chamber of Commerce for old-timers like myself, formerly known as Casey. Significant change like this leads to uncertainty in the business community. So the business community's been talking about your potential ordinance extensively in last weeks, and we'd urge your very thoughtful discussion and amendment and potentially delay until you're confident that this is what your citizens are hoping for. That uncertainty, we believe, will cause some flight of businesses from your city and some loss of tax base that we urge you to fully think through. The amount of benefit the oil and gas industry brings to our state is tremendous, and you have an opportunity to partner with the business community in a way as long as you're willing to partner and find out what the concerns are. You'll hear from several experts tonight, specifically over reverse setbacks and three-year windows and the laps and transferability that cause that uncertainty. With the dense, as we just heard, one hundred and thirty pages in length, we urge you to be very cautious before proceeding so your citizens have a chance to review all the pros and cons. And we deeply appreciate. we deeply appreciate your thoughtfulness on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff. I'm Jim Casherall residing at 10299 Sedalia Street, Commerce City, Colorado. I understand the impulse to create new regulations in the aftermath of SB 181, which gave local governments significant control over oil and gas development, production, et cetera. I believe that many of the proposed regulations are too stringent and will greatly hinder oil and gas operations in this current area. My concern stems from the reactionary nature of some of the regulations that have already been passed and that are proposed to be passed in this community and others. I think that probably there'll be some people behind me that will speak a little more specifically on those particular subjects. Numerous communities have already rushed in to new regulations, simply to be able to say, "We did something." I would caution the idea of just doing something to do something. I would caution against that idea. I'm reminded that last fall, the state voters resoundingly rejected such a measure, on a ballot measure, and now, as outlined in SB 181, where currently it looks like we're going to have to live under some of it. We look to our elected officials to represent us, the people. I sincerely hope that this is in the forefront of your minds as you consider this regulation and/or other regulations. I'm not saying that some minor regulation isn't needed or warranted in any way, and in fact, I believe it is probably needed and warranted, but I think that we need to be careful to make sure that the industry has a voice in the development of those regulations and implementation of them. I suggest a cooperative approach with the industry to see what is possible to secure the welfare of the public and to make sure that the viability of the industry remains there. I appreciate the work that this council is doing and will do in the near future, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Nick Klebenstein, 14178 Sunblaze Loop in Broome Field. Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the City Council this evening. I fear that if City Council elects to go ahead and vote on these regulations tonight, it could mean the end of oil and gas development in Commerce City. On another note, I'm worried that not enough time has been allotted between the release of the draft regulations and this vote for the public and other stakeholders to provide adequate input. Drafting these regulations has been a long, tough process and has resulted in a document that's over 130 pages of technical changes to the city code. Allowing only a week for the public and others to read and wrap their minds around the possible impacts is simply not enough time. In addition, some of the provisions in the regulations would make everything from receiving a permit to operating on a day-to-day basis even more difficult than it already is. One such example is that the regulations would place a three-year limit on oil and gas permits, and should the operator not complete the development within that time, they would forfeit the permit. This regulation does not take into account things such as external market forces, which may keep an operator from developing a site. This would result not only in the forfeiture of a permit, but also the time, the money, and the effort it took to get the permits in the first place. And this is only the tip of the iceberg as far as the issues these regulations propose. I am therefore asking the City Council to delay the vote, provide more time for the public and other stakeholders to actively engage the council and staff on the proposed regulations. This will result in a more robust process and better regulations that work for everybody in Commerce City. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Peter Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Peter Mueller, 4538 East Links Parkway in Centennial. I appreciate the opportunity to just make a few comments. My background is I'm a petroleum engineer from the Colorado School of Mines. I've been an oil and gas operator in my career. I served on the Oil and Gas Commission here in the state for seven years, and I'm the co-founder of Eco Vapor Recovery Systems. My recommendation is to delay adopting these rules, and basically, there's a lot of changes, but one of the most important things for you to understand is that the pressure has changed for Commerce City. You may not be aware that the Oil and Gas Commission Director has proposed a 75% to 80% reduction in the number of permits from previous years. The pace of development in Colorado is slowing down greatly. And so, and at the same time, there's also rule changes being contemplated by CDPHG, some of which look very similar to what I saw on the slides tonight. Same time, there's also rule makings being made by Adams County, of course, and then by the COGCC themselves. Rule makings are just getting started. So there's a potential for having either conflicting or duplicate rules that you're putting, looking to put in place tonight. My point would be for you to delay that. Look at also using your facilities and your resources in those processes rather than establish your own. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Spencer Crouch. I'm with Extraction Oil and Gas. I live at 241 South Manera Street, Denver, Colorado. I wanted to talk with you tonight about the oil and gas regulations. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk tonight. I also appreciate that staff invited the operators, a lot of the operators, COGA and API, to sit down and take some feedback last Friday. I see that some of those, some of the suggestions we made have been incorporated into the proposed code changes, so I appreciate that the city staff is clearly listening to some of the suggestions and comments we've made. There's a lot of stuff I like in these regulations, requiring plugged-in abandoned wells to be recorded on plats and not allowing habitable structures within 50 feet. I think those are great changes. There's a lot for water sampling, for safety, for noise. I think those are all great changes as well. There's a lot in here that's really good, but I think there's also several specific things I'll talk about which I think need amendments or changes to be a little bit more thoughtful in your LDC changes. First, something pretty minor. On page 12, agriculture is not listed as an acceptable sighting for oil and gas. However, on page 23, in the allowable use table, agriculture is listed. I think that's an oversight that potentially needs to be updated. As other people have mentioned, I'm concerned about the three-year window for drilling and completing all the wells. If you look at the setback map that Mr. Martinelli put up there, you can see between the COGCC setbacks and the city setbacks, there's a lot of red on that map. In my opinion, that encourages operators to consolidate to fewer, larger well sites with higher well counts. If you look at a 12-well pad with the average lateral length being drilled right now, it's about one total year to drill and complete all those wells if you don't have any gaps waiting for a drilling rig, waiting for a frac fleet. Your requirement, your code requirements say we have to use a tier-four frac crew. Well, there's only one or two of those in the state. It's going to make it really hard to schedule a 20- or 30-well pad that your setbacks encourage us to do. It's going to be really hard to schedule that within a three-year time period. I don't know how operators will be able to do larger pads like that. Finally, there's a lot on continuous air monitoring. There's baseline air monitoring, air monitoring during drilling and completions, continuous monitoring for the life of the well, real-time reporting is mentioned in there, plus reimbursing the city for any additional air sampling that the city deems necessary. I'd like to see more in there about what those standards are. Is continuous air monitoring one sample a day, one sample an hour, one sample a second? What are we sampling for? How is that real-time data going to be posted? Has any city or company put out a sampling product or methodology that would fit this, or do we have to guess and kind of make it up as we'd go? I'd like to see more details on that. That's all I have. Again, I know that staff's put a ton of time into these regulations, and I appreciate them taking some of our feedback last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Landry, it looks like Landry Skatberg? Skatberg? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for having me. Lindsay Skatberg, 564 Delaware, Denver, Colorado. You know, everyone here has made some really good points about the regulations probably or possibly preventing industry from even effectively doing business in Commerce City. So, I'm not going to echo those statements. I'm just going to say that I grew up in Colorado Springs. I went to University of Colorado. I now live in Denver. I am your, one of your friends, one of your neighbors, and I work in oil and gas, and I, if you had told me 12 years ago that I'd have to be up here fighting for my job, I would have been shocked. I love what I do. I believe in the industry. We're your friends and neighbors, as I've mentioned. The amount of technology, expertise, education that my coworkers and myself bring to the table, we do every day, is quite astonishing. So I hope that you'll take that into consideration and work with the industry effectively and allow oil and gas to continue bringing some benefit to the state of Colorado.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Jim Hayes, Oakwood Homes, 4908 Tower Road in Denver. I sent a letter in actually this morning to all of you, copied Mr. McBroom, Mr. Sheasley. I do want to echo what a lot of people have said tonight. The staff has been very, very responsive. We've had a chance to chat with them a little bit last week, work through some of our issues, but I still got a few things I want to kind of put on the record here that I think you should be considering as well. So, I think the first thing was, there's a few minor errors with respect to capitalization, definitions, things like that. We're just trying to make sure that those are consistent with some of our comments that we provided earlier today. The second thing is that we do really appreciate the fact that the entitled residential use part was taken off. That was a huge issue for us because we actually have a PUD right now that has entitled residential use. And the way the code was currently written up until last Thursday, it would have potentially preempted or made ineligible a big portion of a site that we had already identified as a combination site near 96th Avenue. Given that, though, I still think that there's a challenge there in that we should still have an exemption from the thousand-foot requirement if a surface use agreement's been executed. But there'd be additional provisions that we would be proposing. It would reiterate the thousand-foot limit on new residential lots or plats, which is again what the staff is proposing, during the initial drilling phase, but then we think there should be a lesser setback during the production phase. So in Section 6280, there's a very clear table there that talks about the combination of well sites and what the reduced setback would be. That does not necessarily appear in 5266, and so we think that warrants some amendment to make sure that if, in our case, extraction goes and starts their operations, that once they go into the production phase, then we could actually plaid our lots within that thousand feet, whether it be four or 500 feet, whatever the number of wells they end up having on that site. The way it's currently written right now, we're interpreting it to mean that we could not plat those properties within a thousand feet. So again, I think that's something we need to be working through with your city attorney's office. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that under that private agreement that extraction executed with full and wider, as well as the COGCC rules, you actually measure to the building unit as opposed to the platted lot. And so if you were considering amendments, we'd actually looked at that as well because it could be the difference of allowing a handful of homes to be built within maybe 950 feet, 975 feet. They would still be a thousand feet away, but the lot itself might be a little bit closer than a thousand feet if you decide to change your direction on that. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Like Dan Renshaw?
Hello. My name's Dan Renshaw. I live at 13865 Trenton Street. I want to start out by saying thank you, guys, and I also will not be taking up too much time. As has been said, it's a lot of pages to go through in such a short time, a lot of extra regulations. I'm a financial advisor. I don't work in the oil and gas industry, but almost all my clients are oil and gas. One thing I like to point out is that the average income of each of my clients is around $100,000, maybe a little bit more a year, but the average education is about two years. I say that because oil and gas is one of the few industries that you can have a high school education and still have a chance to get into one of these insanely expensive houses we have here in Colorado. So, with that being said, I think that these regulations do stand a chance of pushing oil and gas out, and it's hard to argue against that point. Less profitability here, less reason for companies to do business. But the thing that we're going to hurt is not big oil and gas. We're not hurting Chevron, we're not hurting, you know, Conoco. All those guys are just fine. They're not here. We're hurting local oil and gas. We're hurting the small businesses that support those. We're hurting hotels, the gas stations, the small business owners of engineering firms and people that have sank their life and heart and soul into this. So, I just recommend, or would like to recommend, maybe taking a breather on this. There's a ton of regulations. The oil and gas industry is already extremely highly regulated, and just taking a minute and letting some of these things pan out, understand exactly what it is we're asking, and if maybe they're already reaching some of the standards more stringent than what's currently being required. I'm sure other people come up here and tell you that. You guys have been in here, you've heard the same stuff I have. So, I guess that's it. Yeah, I just hope you guys take a little bit longer and let's not, let's not run a good business opportunity completely out of town.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I have a home at 11259 Kalispel Street in Commerce City, and I'm the President of the Villages of Buffalo Run Homeowners Association, an association of 1,861 units. And until tonight, I was unaware that the regulations that have been negotiated have been published, and I'm wondering why someone in a position that I'm in was not made specifically aware of something like that. So it would be something that could be discussed with the residents of our subdivision. And so, I recommend that we accept the recommendations of Mr. Sheasley and take a little time and put this thing together the way it needs to be, and then for people such as myself in a situation, in a position like this, would have the ability to get this out before our residents. I do not believe that the oil, that oil and gas is detrimental to our community, and I would like to quote from a study that was recently released, which I think is not really telling the truth about oil and gas. A couple of weeks ago, a study was released by our state, which was actually a study completed in 2017, and it is, and I'm going to quote from that study, "Since the study," quote, "is a modeling study, it does not measure the actual concentrations people are exposed to in the areas surrounding well pads or the health impacts that people have reported." But now we have an administrat, and this does not agree, by the way, with a, with a statement that was released by the same department in that same year of 2017, which said basically that we do not have an immediate need for concern. But now we have a new administration, not the same as the one that, from 2017, and it looks pretty political to me to appear a couple of weeks before an election. And finally, I'd like to add that if the oil, if oil and gas is detrimental to the health and safety of our community, why does the newest area high school, Riverdale Ridge High School... High School, picture of which I have with me here, have an oil and gas well right on its property at 132nd and Riverdale War-- Road? And why was a private million-dollar home recently built within 500 feet of an oil and gas well? And finally, I have six grandchildren raised within 400 feet of an operating oil and gas well, and none of them have been affected in any way by the presence of that well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Heidi Williams?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Heidi Williams, I work for the Home Builders Association of Metro Denver, 933 East Easter Place in Centennial. And I do have a letter that I submitted to you all, and I just wanted to give that to someone for the record.
The attorney there is fine.
Oh, to the clerk, okay.
To the clerk.
I'm here mainly to talk about the reverse setbacks for residential to oil and gas facilities, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what the setbacks really mean. So if you have a 500-foot setback, you can eliminate potentially 90 single-family detached homes on a 500-foot setback, 285 medium-density, which could be town homes or paired homes, this is the product that we can build, the attainable workforce housing. You can eliminate the ability to build 450 high-density apartments or multifamily, and this is normally where we would find our affordable product. If you do a 1,000-foot setback, you can eliminate, it's not double, so instead of 90 homes at 500 feet, you eliminate 360 single-family detached homes. If you do 1,000-foot setback, it's 1,080 medium-density homes and 1,800 high-density homes. So you can see that it doesn't just double when you double your reverse setbacks. And so why is this important? Well, it's important because we know that housing attracts commercial development, housing or rooftops attract retail development, which is a sales tax base that you all use to provide services to your citizens. The commercial obviously provides jobs and tax revenue. You also reduce your ability to collect building permit fees and TAP fees, which is a revenue into the city. So housing is very important to the city for a number of reasons, and, you know, we obviously really hope that you all consider that. So we're supportive of the amendments that were proposed by Mr. Hayes previously, and we consider that you, or we ask that you consider to reduce the setbacks in your tables and clarify the tables in 6280 to be consistent with the rest of the code. So I, again, I'm really thankful that I have the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Good luck as you make your decision.
Thank you. John Haley?
Dan Haley, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor Ford, council and staff. My name is Dan Haley, I'm the president and CEO of the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. We are located at 1800 Glen Arm Place in Denver. Wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Commerce City could be the second jurisdiction to pass new regulations since Governor Polis signed Senate Bill 181 into law earlier this year. COGA and our members are grateful that throughout this process, the city has not implemented a moratorium, and we're grateful that you have included industry as a stakeholder in this process. While industry has had only a week to review the proposed regulations, we're also grateful for the ability to provide feedback through our meeting last week with city staff. However, we do not believe the regulations as initially drafted or as revised are ready to move forward, as they do not reflect the realities of responsible oil and natural gas development in Colorado. Even as revised, the combination of setbacks and zoning are essentially a ban on new oil and gas development in the city. Some of the regulations also are not technically reasonable, such as continuous air monitoring and real-time data reporting for the lifetime of each well site. As stated earlier, the state's about ready to undergo a rulemaking in December on air. We also believe the city intends to regulate certain aspects of oil and natural gas development that are outside of the city's jurisdiction, such as gathering lines. Senate Bill 181 requires that both state and local regulations be reasonable and necessary, and it is our position that certain elements of these regulations are neither. COGA and our members understand that Commerce City wants to update its regulations, so we hope you are willing to continue working with stakeholders to further revise the draft regulations to reflect the realities of responsible oil and natural gas development, while also protecting the health, safety, welfare, and environment and wildlife of Commerce City. I think it's important to note that our industry values what all of you value. We value clean air and water, a healthy environment, as well as safe communities and the safety of our workforce. We look forward to additional discussions and hope to serve as a resource for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julia Rhine?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Julia Rhine, and I'm with Brownstein Hyatt Farber Schreck, 410 Seventeenth Street, Denver, Colorado. I serve as outside counsel to COGA, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. As you know from the stakeholder process, energy companies have significant technical, practical, and legal concerns about dozens of the city's proposed regulations. My remarks focus on the legal infirmity of the proposed regulations, and I want to emphasize the overarching legal standard that informs the scope of your authority. Specifically, COGA urges city council to honor SB 181's mandate that local regulation of oil and gas development be both necessary and reasonable. The legislative history of the bill underscores the gravity of these two modifiers. They weren't part of the bill's original draft, but were consciously and deliberately added for the purpose of making sure there were, in Senator Finnberg's words, the sponsor of the bill, quote, "guardrails," unquote, on a local government's authority. Industry believes several of the proposed regulations, including but not limited to siting, zoning, the permit application process, and permit link are unreasonable and unnecessary in violation of SB 181. Importantly, however, that bill is not the proposed regulation's only legal stumbling block, and certain of the draft provisions violate state statutes directly. For example, one of the draft provisions declares that material submitted as part of the initial assessment process in site eligibility determination will not be deemed an application for development purposes of Title 24, Article 68 of the Colorado statutes regarding vested property rights. But the city's statement is belied by those statutes. Section 2468-102 explicitly provides, quote, "For local governments that have provided for the review and approval of site-specific development plans in multiple stages, application means the original application at the first stage in any process that may culminate in the ultimate approval," unquote. Commerce City cannot simply declare that these state statutes don't apply, and in fact, Section 2468-101 specifically states that the vested property rights statutes are a matter of exclusive statewide concern, not local concern, not even mixed, but statewide concern. As another example, Commerce City's proposed regulation to assess fines duplicative to the COGCC does not acknowledge the settlement nature of most COGCC enforcement orders and does not acknowledge the statutory limitation in CRS Section 3116101 that prohibits a municipality from assessing fines greater than $2,650, or the limitations on fines in SB 181 itself. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us through our list of folks who have signed up to speak on this particular ordinance. However, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience who did not get a chance to sign up that would like to speak, I'll need you to raise your hand. You can come on up, and then I will ask again. I want to make sure anybody that wants to talk to the council on this item has the opportunity. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My apologies on failing to sign up on the actual sheet. Appreciate you calling us up and allowing us the chance to talk. Good evening, remain, council members as well. My name is Chris McGowan, I'm associate director for the Colorado Petroleum Council. CPC is a division of the American Petroleum Institute and represents all facets of the oil and natural gas industry here in Colorado. CPC and its member companies are committed to ensuring a strong, viable, and natural, oil and natural gas industry capable of meeting the energy needs of Colorado in a safe and environmentally responsible manner. We do appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight on the proposal. I would, again, echo a lot of what's been said tonight, I would really like to thank the council members for their time, and most importantly, Dominic and the staff, I think they did a real great job with outreach and stakeholder process, so I do want to appreciate, say a special word to him. Tonight I am here to comment on the proposed ordinance. Again, we would start by saying we are certainly both understand and appreciate the city's desire to update their regulations to reflect the authority that you have been granted under Senate Bill 181. We do also support your intent to implement regulations that protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. However, we have some concerns, some of these provisions, as drafted, may actually run counter to that notion. Again, I would note that there's been a good faith effort to address many of our concerns. However, for example, as you've heard tonight, the code still retains a three-year use-it-or-lose-it timeframe for oil and gas permits. As noted, staff made a change to allow for an extension for purely administrative reasons, but that does not take into consideration market conditions, equipment availability, long-term business planning, and many other factors that may play a significant role during that three-year window. And with the significant financial burden the city has opted to propose in this code for each permit, such a significant expenditure should retain some viability and last beyond a short timeframe such as three years. Further, we would note, as noted before, that while a direct approval of a permit transfer is now required as opposed to an entirely new permitting scheme, which we do support, that's a positive step, we do also make note that the city is not imposing requirement here that they do not impose on any other industry with respect to operators' ability to freely transfer their own private property that they have invested and developed in. As the council considers this proposal, we ask that you consider all your options available. As always, we truly appreciate your time, and we're happy to be of assistance as needed in any point in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else, raise your hand please. Mr. Serna, come on up.
Do I have to give my address again?
Yeah, he said you're good. Go ahead, Germa.
Look, with all due respect to everybody on both sides, 181 gives the empowerment to cities and to local governments. I think it's you. The oil companies came in at a time when Commerce City is growing. We're not established yet, but the predicament is, is that particles in some of the studies that have recently come out might be on the rules as soon as those rules become into play. Don't make the same mistake that is hurting our children right now when it comes to smoking. Nobody really took the time to really look into it as to how that smoke, as invisible as it is as you take it in, dangerous when it comes out also. Oil is here, it's going to be needed, it's not going to go away. We need time. We say, hey, we need all this oil right away. If that's the case, why are we fighting for a portion of oil that is not enough back in, where it's, everybody's dying and fighting this and that? It's control. We, 50,000 new people in Commerce City, we need that protection. You are our local government. You have to make that decision. And all it does, and all we need to feel safe with our kids, with anybody, seniors, everything, it's just a little bit of more time to wait for those rules. And then the community can have more input and perspective, because we'll know what we're talking about. The gentleman over here previously said it's hard to get people to meet together if they want to do this or if they want to do that. No, it's not. It's just a matter of time and giving us the opportunity to really sit down and talk, like this other gentleman over here said, and work it through. I don't, I didn't hear anybody say, don't take the oil, but stay within some new guidelines as far as distance, as far as what's going to be healthy for this community. That's your responsibility. And there's more coming, Mayor. So do what you're going to do, but keep the people in mind. That's what you're there for.
Mr. Serna, let me ask you, are you supportive of Ordinance 2235, or are you opposed to Ordinance 2235?
I am opposed to it because we haven't given it enough time to sit down and really talk about it.
That's what I needed here, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? From the back, Mr. Bullock, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and council, Renee Bullock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street. One of the main jobs of council is to do no harm. And as I look at this ordinance, it not only does harm to builders, but it does harm to everyone. This, I would love to see you take time to take this ordinance, take it back, look at it, amend it somewhat, and look at the different aspects of it. One of them, the reserve, the reverse setbacks, that makes no sense whatsoever, and it could actually paralyze this community. Another one of the things that, the three-year time limit, a three-year time limit would be feasible if it was a three-year time limit from breaking ground, but it's, from the time of permit, the three-year time limit, it doesn't call for a lot of the things that what they need to do, electrification, midstream air monitoring, and many other requirements that you've put on them. So just to start that, they might be a year and a half into it, and before they drill one well pad. So I would love to see you guys just take your time, and I'm puzzled how the planning commission, with as big of a document as this is, got it and went through it and sent it on to you with a yes recommendation that quick, because I've been reading it since last week, Thursday, and I'm still not through the whole document. So it has a lot of ins and outs, and I would love to see you amend some of them, because some of them totally don't make sense. And if you would look at page 16J, page 19 double J, double K, and double O, and page 16K, some of those, when you look at them, they're contradictions, and they don't make sense in any way, they say the opposite things and they're the same thing. So I would really love for you to take this and take your time with it and kick it down the road to the next council if you have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I am also not in favor of this ordinance, but for different reasons. One of them, I don't believe it has very stringent financial assurances for Commerce City. For example, I'm not sure this Commerce City will-- For example, I'm not sure this Commerce City will engage in a contract with a company that has a $376 million loss as its cumulative deficit. Or a company that, for example, has, if you had a hundred dollars two years ago, now be worth twenty dollars. This company has $1.7 billion in debt, of which $1.3 billion is due in the next five years. This company's stock has dropped by ninety percent, which has lost $3.3 billion in market value. Its current market value is $300 million, which is, which is debt is 3,850 times more than what the market value is. Its return on investment is six and a half percent. Its average debt is paying seven percent. I am not a legal person, but I seen enough legal documents or agreements that actually try to tie in a company's financial viability into any type of agreement. Some members, some citizens who had come before have petroleum engineers from Commerce School of Mines. While they were actually earning that degree, I was earning a degree from Commerce School of Mines in Mineral Economics. And this was one of our focuses was on how to analyze energy companies financially. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ain't no one else? I'm open for a motion from the council.
A discussion?
Or discuss, well, we have a motion and then we'll have a discussion. So it should be. Mr. Hughesman?
Thank you, Mayor. All day long, I've been reading the LDC amendments, been reading emails that have been coming in from the stakeholders. Most recently read an email that came in from the CDPE on recommended revisions. I do have concerns going forward with the proposed approach of we pass this ordinance this evening and then we try to do amendments on it on second reading. My concern on that is those amendments do not go back out for public comment. Those amendments do not give the public an opportunity to provide impact or, excuse me, provide input on whether or not they feel that those amendments should be passed. So rather than go down that motion or go down that path, I think the best thing for us to do is to set aside the self-imposed deadline of November 18th to pass these LDC amendments and table this. Let the staff go back, continue the hard work they're doing, continue to engage the stakeholders on both sides of the issue, continue to look at the amendments that are proposed by the CDPE and come together with a document that goes back out for public comment so that we can truly make sure that we are looking at this from a holistic approach as opposed to one that is rushed just to meet a self-imposed deadline. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion. Mr. Douglas, discussion? After I have a motion and a second, we'll go to discussion. Is there a second to Mr. Hughesman's motion? Councilman Frank?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to continue this, to allow for it to be amended and brought back out to the public for some comment. I would like to hear from the attorney.
Thank you. Just to clarify, for procedural reasons, would you consider this to a particular date or to postpone it indefinitely? Meaning we would go back and redraft based on stakeholder and council input?
Oh, amend that motion based on input from staff on what they think a reasonable timeline to truly put this together, have ample opportunity for public input. I don't know what their schedule is and how long they think it would take in order to amend this. I don't want to be in a situation where we are just in such a hurry to pass these amendments that we don't do it right.
I would recommend postponing the matter indefinitely then and then allowing us to put it back on the agenda once that is done.
Indefinite it is.
All right, is that acceptable to the second?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion and a second to postpone at this point indefinitely the oil and gas LDC updates. I'm open for discussion. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. You know, I heard a lot of, let's say, testimony or suggestions from the industry. And currently, we don't have any, any activity in Commerce City. And there is suggestion that we lose business. Well, we have a lot of service industry now that provides service to areas outside of here that do business for fracking. Three years is a, is a long time. And I'm really not inclined to extend that to be, to be held hostages even, even, even longer for this industry to make their mind up. You know, we have a 24 high-pressure gas line that was installed. And, you know, with this fracking coming in or potentially coming in, we had a Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge, which has been a industrial disaster by itself and there's a cleanup. We do not need to disturb that. Now, I've heard, heard people say, make comments ever since, you know, growing up in Colorado, that Commerce City is industrial city. And others say, hey, well, we don't want to have that in the other area to balance it out. And when it comes to fracking and environmental and health and safety, we need to put the people first. And when you're fracking, you're just not going vertical, you're gonna go horizontal underneath homes and all that. That's a huge impact. And I don't think this, the way the codes right here are written are strong enough. I think we should be stricter. And I heard the industry say right now, if we approve this, it would run industry out. Well, I think it needs to be stricter because I don't believe Commerce City should be going that way. We have radon gas here, high level of radon gas in this area. And for all the people who came in here to testify, not one of you live here. One of you here, one person came up and talked, they have a home, a home here, they don't live here. So if you're gonna come in from the outside and tell us how, how, how we're, how we're gonna do business here and you don't live here, that's hard for me to digest. So I have to go with what, what's being considered here and to strengthen this, yes, I want to make it difficult. If you're gonna come here and drill, those are regulations that we have, that you have to follow. And then when it comes to financial stability, you have companies come in here and, and they do end up fracking and there is loss and they cannot, the people who they've been impacted cannot recover from the company because of their loss? That's not good either. So for, so for me to, to, to hold this off would be to see how we can strengthen this, not weaken it. We do need, we do not need a watered-down bill. And that's what I heard about 181 coming out of the house that it could have been stronger. I do not want this bill that we're writing for land development code to be weaker than what it, I mean, to weaken right now the point that's where, where it's at. Anything but to strengthen it. So it's very frustrating to hear folks come in here and tell us what we should be doing. But right now, we don't have that kind of activity. And I'm trying to disallow it. I'm sorry, but we're gonna write these codes and we'll, we'll guess and come in here. Then it, then, then they come in, but it's gonna be hard. So I, I, I would, I would support this based on strengthening the, what's already here and not just weaken it. So I'm sorry, but I'm not looking at that.
First?
So I'm in support of most of what, what we wrote down here. There, there's some stuff that we obviously need to change on both sides, I think. And a couple of weeks back, as long as a couple of weeks ago, one thing I, I spoke about was a compromise. You know, we sit up here or we go on social media or however the discussions are happening and we fight back and forth about get rid of oil and gas or we should allow oil and gas. But we struggle to find the compromises that does, does both. And, and one thing that I feel that this at least gets us much closer to is thinking about the people, thinking about the health, understanding the best practices that are out there. You know, we hear about feasibility in business of being able to comply with continuous air monitoring. I happen to live next door to one of the top air monitoring, someone who works for the top air monitoring companies in the country. And the recommendations of continuous air monitoring, air monitoring aren't even there right now. And they have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in each rig that they have for that process and it's not there right now. So understanding that we're asking some requirements, if we don't define them further, to come up with new processes that aren't even invented yet with technology that's not available does concern me. You know, we heard someone about the financial feasibility of the company that we signed Anara away with and that company's value dropped after 181 was passed. So regulation could be directly correlated with its company value loss. And so adding further regulations will only hinder that company even further. And so, you know, I, I appreciate Councilman Douglas being very honest about his intentions with this. And my intentions, I'll be honest about mine too, is to find the best-case scenario that we can present that provides both the health of our, of Commerce City residents for the future, not just three years, not five years, ten, twenty-five years. For the life of the well, even after its captain abandoned. But also at the same time, understanding that although you may not live here, you employ quite a, quite a large group of our folks that do live here. And understanding the business needs and what goes into this industry has been, you know, a challenge for everybody, I think. Senate Bill 181 all of a sudden makes city council needing to be experts on oil and gas regulation. And if you want to talk about the truck part of it, sure, I'm the state expert on the truck part of it. But I can't tell you about all the oil and gas, you know, all the above-ground regulations that need to be imposed. And so taking the time to learn that and trying to find a compromise that affords the protections that we've been hearing from our citizens that are needed in terms of best practices and getting electric drill rigs and, and those types of regulations that we have put in place with those agreement or with, with these codes. I support that a hundred percent, you know, finding that middle ground is not gonna make everybody happy. I, I, I know that for sure. We will not get it perfect, but we will do our best to try to get as best as we can in terms of being fair to both business and protecting our constituents. And so I would say we should move forward with some of these amendments that we talked about today. Some of them are pretty obvious. Some of them do need public comment and some, and some feedback from our citizens as well as industry so we can make good, responsible decisions moving forward. So with what we, the motion we have on place or in place, I do support that.
Madera?
Yes, I'm a little torn about this motion. I definitely think that there are some excellent points made today in regards to specific amendments. I didn't necessarily agree with all of them, but I think it gets down to, right now, our land development code is not up to date for oil and gas. And if we belong in it for too long, then we're gonna get all these permits and not have any protections for our residents. And so that's the, the concerning part. The other piece of it was, I think as a council, we've been talking about this for almost two years now. And we didn't want to dump this on the lap of a new council that's gonna be coming in. Everyone knows tomorrow is the election night. So we can have half the council be completely new people that have never served before and are gonna be faced with having to learn all this. And they can be more strict in anti-oil and gas or they can be less strict. You know, so there's a lot of uncertain, uncertainty there too. So that's why I was more, I prefer to go forward with what we had. Take the amendments that we've received them, have staff vet those and propose amendments to us that they see appropriate. But, yeah, I'm, I'm in support of the, the current motion, but I think there should be a timeline.
Thank you. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I will not support this as written. I think that, I'm not an oil and gas expert or a truck driver, but I knocked on a whole lot of doors recently in Ward 4. And I was amazed how many oil and gas workers do live in our community and how many of those that aren't in oil and gas do support oil and gas, safe oil and gas. And so those are the people that live in my community that I talked to personally in the last few weeks. I'll support this if changes are made. There's, there's things, I've taken a lot of notes and like others have said, it's taken me, from the minute that was posted, it's taken me a long time to filter through some of that and read it and try to make sense of some of it. I attended two selection committees in the last few months as a councilman. Those selection committees were through Aurora and the other one was Denver. And the one thing that I remember astoundingly clear is when I listened to those people say, when we look at businesses in your community, when we want to come and put the sit-down restaurants in the theaters, we look at certain things and they, they listed those things. And one of those things were if you're anti-oil and gas, we take note of that and we're gonna move along. And, and they said that as clear as could be to me and said that, you know, and then they specifically said moratoriums. You know, those are, are danger signs to selection committees. Because, you know, they're in it to, to build, they're in it to bring businesses. And, and, and I, that rang true to me. I thought, okay, you know, if we're doing this, and, and most everybody knows where I stand on oil and gas, I don't want to shut the industry down at all. And I do want it to be safer and I do want it to be restrictive. But I don't want to shut it down. I don't want to shut the railroads down. I don't want to shut DIA down. Shutting industries down is dangerous and I think this is overstepping our bounds a little bit. I also think that, you know, I hear people that stepped up tonight saying this town doesn't have anything. We need more schools, we need more this, we need, we're not gonna get that if we go down this path. I think that this discourages oil and gas in our area and I think that you, you can't have your cake and eat it too. And if you're going to, you're gonna want houses and you're gonna want sit-down restaurants in the theaters and all the amenities that Northfield has and that Brighton has, you're gonna have to accept that oil and gas is going to come in here and they are going to do what they do in hopefully a safe manner. That's what we decide. And, and we all live together. No one else is doing what we're doing. I mean, Broomfield, Erie, Boulder. These kind of restrictions just don't exist right now. And I don't really want to sit up here, this could be my last night, you know, I mean, tomorrow's the election. But I don't want to be that guy that shuts down that industry or at least starts to shut that, that industry. I heard an attorney get up and say, you're violating the law, you will be sued. I mean, there's a lot of things in here that I think we need to take into consideration and, and, and right. So with that said, no, I will not support it as written. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I'm not done yet. I'll call on you when, when we're done. I'm gonna have some discussion then. As Mr. Davis said, that the election's tomorrow. I'm actually good with the motion and the second. I'm good with it because this has been a very tiring issue for me to deal with over many, many years. Mr. Douglas is, I consider a friend of mine. We don't agree politically, but he's a friend and I treat him with respect as I do anybody else in this community, regardless of, of your views. I think it's important to state because this should be my last discussion on oil and gas. I'm hoping if it doesn't rear its head again. I have always been supportive of the industry. Always been supportive of health and safety of this community as well. And my intent has always been to make sure that we consider the health and safety, but not destroy the industry. but not destroy the industry. And from my point of view, watching this over many, many years, it seems to have become a battleground of people that are against oil and gas, period, and people that work in the industry and produce oil and gas. There are a few things that come to mind. Oil and gas isn't going anywhere anytime soon. And whatever is not utilized here locally is going to be drilled and acquired somewhere else. Until we have alternatives to offset the need for oil and gas, you're not going to see a reduction in what's pumped out of the ground, what's burned and used for the 24-inch natural gas pipeline that goes to the Cherokee Plant to provide heat for their residents, for people to plug in their electric cars. There is not an alternative. Wind farms cost more to erect than they ever produce. So, I'm all for finding new ways to provide energy and to reduce our carbon footprint. I'm all for making things better. I'm all for some regulations that will reduce the emissions for people that could get asthma. Now, I grew up right near Suncor, my entire life, on 60th Avenue, right down the road here on Ivy Street. Some people probably tell you, "I'm screwed up in the head too," but it isn't from that oil and gas. It's from having to listen to a lot of bantering from people that are politically motivated, from one side or the other. And I'm speaking to everybody on both sides when I say that. I sit here and I look at some of these things and how they affect this community. The three-year window, I think it's got some problems. I think based on the timing and how things happen, for crying out loud, I've been in this discussion for 15 years about oil and gas. My first eight years, we had a committee set up, we had people screaming and throwing stuff and wanting moratoriums. And here we are at the end of my second eight years, and we're still having that same discussion. And when we talk about how everybody in the industry that's sitting in the room right now, it doesn't live in Commerce City? I have to tell you, I have sat through many, many meetings where that room was full of a whole lot of people that didn't live in this city that were telling me how bad oil and gas was too. I think it's interesting how a lot of the folks who are for health and safety in Commerce City are testifying in Aurora, Broomfield, Longmont, Lakewood, anywhere they can because they have a passion to revolt against that industry, regardless of the health and safety of where they're at at the moment. They may live somewhere else. And I had people from Boulder sitting right here in the front row telling me how this is going to affect the health and safety. They weren't here because they care about the health and safety of this community. They care about whether or not we utilize oil and gas, period. And you don't start with a new, anything new, you don't get rid of what you're using until you have a replacement. And I'm all for finding that replacement. And you heard a person come up a little while ago and say, "Well, how are you going to fuel the heat and electricity and everything else in some new buildings that will be out off 8470?" Well, I'm hoping that we have some alternatives by that time. But I'm hesitant to say that there will be until we have other alternatives. I cannot and will not go against what makes this United States of America operate. I looked at Suncor, and when you look at the fact that Suncor produces 40% of the fuel for this state, if they were to shut the switch off today, the cost of fuel would go five and a half, six and a half dollars a gallon. And that's from the general manager of the refinery. The one thing I can tell you is if you shut off Suncor, someone in Houston or somewhere else is going to be having to refine 40% of the fuel for Colorado that you just cut off. You're not going to improve the carbon footprint for anyone in the process. And now, you're going to have to haul that fuel by train or truck from wherever that refinery is to this community. And if you think you're saving the world from natural destruction because we're using fossil fuels, think again, you're making it worse. So, consider some of everything that goes into the pieces that we're talking about. When we talk, I wrote some things down here, the three-year window's concerning. I will tell you, after reading the regulations, talking about the regulations, I came in here tonight prepared to vote no on the new regulations. I was hoping we could amend it and make it better. The upside to of passing the LDC tonight on first reading and this council seeing it on a second reading, I was supportive of not from the fact that we were trying to ram something through at the end of my term. I was supportive because it actually put some protections into place for the residents of Commerce City if we could have done it in a rational manner. What you're going to see tonight is a vote to postpone this indefinitely. That means the current regulations stand and the permits that come in prior to their being regulations fall under the current regulations. It was in the benefit of everybody in this community to try to get some rational regulations in place, beneficial for the industry, beneficial for our residents. That's not going to happen. And I'm hopeful that the next council can take this up. There are five people running for mayor, multiple people running for council, and I wish them all good luck. I can't tell you, nor could you tell me, what to expect this council to look like because it's the biggest turnover this city has ever seen. Mr. Douglas may be the mayor, he may not be. I can assure you that me and Rick Teter won't be here. And some people are glad because I'm pro-oil and gas. There's probably some anti-oil and gas people out there cheering and probably have a party when I'm gone. That's okay with me too. I don't have a problem with that. But you may see a council with a mayor that's more supportive of the industry. We don't know. So, tonight, by pushing this off, I believe that the industry and the residents are taking a gamble and throwing the dice. Because what you have requested us to do and what is on the plate and that I'm going to be voting in support of is rolling the dice to see what happens. Now, regardless of who gets elected, they can always change the LDC to make it stricter or make it easier. But I don't have that crystal ball. I can't tell you what's going to happen. What I do want to tell you is I appreciate your passion. I appreciate the anti-oil and gas group's passion as well. And I'm not going to criticize them. I just have a different opinion. And anymore in this society, we need to start having a little better civil discord and having the ability to sit down and talk about issues and work through what's good for the majority of the people. Talking about the majority of the people, every time I mention this number, someone says 181. But I will tell you, when it comes to these regulations, I can only think back to our residents voting in favor of not allowing 112 to go in place. They opposed 112, and that was specifically on setbacks. And tonight, we're looking at pushing those setbacks to the level that they voted against. And it was the majority of our residents. Now, the other thing you need to know is, when we look at this room, it isn't always what our residents truly have an opinion. We have 60,000 people or 58,000 people live here. I can't tell you 10 angry people on one issue or 10 angry people on another issue if that is a good sampling of the voters of our community. But what I can tell you is, when 112 failed at the level that it failed at, that our residents weren't supportive of those setbacks at that time, and I don't know as though they've changed their mind. 181 was a legislative matter. It was not a vote of the people. And so, I have to take that into consideration when I say setbacks are a concern. Reverse setbacks are horrible. You'll blow holes in this community and you'll have property that won't be maintained by the landowner. Nobody want anything to do with it. If you have reverse setbacks that last for the life of a well, 30, 40, 50 years, who maintains that property? And you surely can't develop anything on it. And what I think is the right thing to do, which is a community did it, that is, has seemed more anti-oil and gas over time than most, is Broomfield. And they said, "Public disclosure. Make sure they sign a disclosure with certain fonts, it has to be in red, that they're buying a home or property within the limitation of what is deemed." If it's 2,000 feet, if it matches the original setbacks, whatever. Do it by public, do it by written disclosure so that they own that. If government starts telling you where you can and can't live, if you want to buy a home within 1,000 feet of a well, that should be your choice and your risk. I was brought up under a buyer beware scenario, and I had my real estate license for years. Let the person decide. And then, you know what that creates? Oh, well, I live by the railroad tracks. Why doesn't the city now put setbacks? We don't control the government when it comes to rail. But why can't the city now turn around and put reverse setbacks to development of railroads, of soccer stadiums, concert venues, you name it? I don't believe that it's the role of government to set those type of reverse setbacks. I think it's the role of government to make sure that the people that are buying properties within that distance, they know and they sign a document stating that they know. That is their choice. I'm not going to tell you, you shouldn't buy next to a railroad track. But if you want to, the landowner has a right to sell a home on that property near that railroad track. But you're agreeing to buy it there. And I've always had this mentality, you can build a house next to a highway, but you can't build a highway next to a house. It's the same concept. You have to be considerate. But if that well's there and you're meeting the setbacks that are put in place to turn around and say, "Someone can't live next to that well," and take that property right from the property owner and then force them to maintain that property for 30 to 40 years? They might as well donate it to the city, let the city mow it, because it's a waste of their effort. Transferability. I don't know of any other industry that requires new permitting for transfer of interest. This proprietary information being public. I realize that it's important that the city may need to know, certain people may need to know. But McDonald's still isn't handing out their Big Mac sauce recipe. And I think we have to be considerate of trade secrets and proprietary information. I just want to make sure that we, the right people know what it is so that we can make sure it's safe for our residents. That's what matters. Do we need to put a billboard up and say what Halliburton uses for their fracking fluids? I think that that is another nail in the coffin for the industry, and I don't support that as well. Had a gentleman come up and very respectful and a good education and probably very wise at what he was talking about. But it wasn't about this ordinance before us. It was about extraction. It was about their financials. The one thing is, is extractions turning in their permits, we follow under these original rules. So, I get it. You know, there's probably small businesses that started up in this community that were destined to fail, but they were able to make it. I don't pick and choose the companies. And I don't want to tell you that you don't have a right. This is America. And God bless you. I hope that you can make it and survive. But I could tell you right now, if extraction went away tomorrow, there would be another operator sitting in here doing a regional operators agreement to harvest the same resources that are protected by the federal laws that you have a right to. So, if extraction goes away, they come, there's someone else. What matters the most is if there's an issue with that operation that would be harmful to this community, I would want to make sure that this community would be made whole by any accident that may occur. And accidents do occur in the industrial area. Air monitoring, I think, is one of the biggies. I looked at our regulations, and it was mentioned here tonight. I don't know how many air monitors we need. I don't know how often they're going to be triggered. I don't know. You mentioned, is it second by second? Is it minute by minute? I mean, I heard all these things. And I also can tell you that I also read the information given out by CDPHD on some of their recent findings from data collected many years ago. But I also recall Broomfield requiring air monitoring, and they found net zero impact by spending over a million dollars on some air monitoring to protect the well-being of their residents. And frankly, based on information that I've heard, it's really hard to tell who you can even trust and who you can't trust. Because I could find you a specialist that will tell you, "The polar ice caps are melting and we're all going to die in three years." But I could also tell you, people, that there's professionals out there say, "There's more trees on this planet than there's ever been, and we are being good stewards and getting better at it every day." I won't be here for the outcome of this meeting. But it was important for me to share some of my opinion on this particular ordinance that is before the city. All I could tell you is what I will tell all the candidates. Good luck. It's not an easy job. I wish you all well. And I will tell that to the anti-oil and gas people, and I will tell that to the pro-industry folks. I'm looking forward to not having to make this decision. It was uncomfortable in the first place. It's been uncomfortable for many, many years. And I will leave it up to whoever comes next. Because, good luck, because you will piss off half the people with what you do. End of my discussion. With that being said, seeing no further discussion, I have a motion and a second. Brian McBroom wants to speak, and then I'm going to call for a vote.
Just a quick comment. First of all, given the comments tonight, the feedback we've had prior to tonight, postponing seems to be a very prudent course of action. Postponing indefinitely is appreciated because sitting here tonight, I don't know how much time it might take to thoughtfully go through the comments, to be able to engage council, engage the public in some amendments. We will come back, though, on November 18th with a rough timeline on how much time we think that'll take. So, I wouldn't want folks to think postponing indefinitely is some desire to postpone it for a very long time. We'll be back with a timeline on the 18th to lay out what we think.
I appreciate those comments, Mr. McBroom. What I will tell you, though, is with the validity of the importance of what is about to be placed in the lap of a majority new council, please allow them the time to be brought up to speed and to understand this and warn them of the bruises and the lashings that they'll take in the process. Right? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Good luck, y'all. Thank you for coming in tonight. All right. Ordinance is on second reading. 2239, Massage Facility Updates. This ordinance was passed unanimously on October 7th. However, staff is recommending amending the ordinance before passage on second and final reading. Will the city attorney please read the proposed amendment?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. As indicated in the communication for this item, there's a recommendation to replace subsection 9-3705, sub-A, sub-5 with certain language. revising what crimes would disqualify someone from withholding a massage facility license. So I would be happy to read that full language or just ask for a motion to amend that ordinance by replacing subsection nine three seven oh five A five with the language proposed by staff.
What are the council's desires? Mr. Hughesman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance with the amendment.
Mr. Hurst?
I'd like to second that motion.
Motion is second with the proposed amendments. Is there any discussion? Saying none. Need a roll call vote?
And just while you're voting...
You wanna read the title, please?
Yes, I was gonna do that as weight music. Ordinance two-two-three-nine, an ordinance supporting the practice of massage therapy by repealing and reenacting division seven of article three of chapter nine of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code relating to the licensing and regulation of the operation of massage facilities.
Thank you. Call for that vote now. For the record, amendment and second reading has passed as amended unanimously by the council. Get into administrative council business. Anyone on the council have any administrative council business? Mr. Wardiola?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, with the retreat and orientation committee, we kinda decided to go forward and propose the orientation to be sooner than later for the incoming council, December sixth and seventh. There's a couple of things that I wanna see what council thinks. I did get selected to go to the NALO Policy Fiscal Management Conference, which they pay for everything. I had to apply for it, which is on the sixth and seventh. The PRG Serial with Santa and Winterfest is on the seventh. So I wanted to see if we could move it back a little bit further. So that's kinda what I wanted to see what the other members. We had a date of January twenty-fifth. We did believe that was too far out, but the sixth and seventh. Winterfest, I know I'm gonna miss it. I didn't know the date either, which is a cool event. That was like our first council event that we went to, and the serial with the Santa up at Bison Grill. So I don't know, for new council, that's a pretty cool opportunity to go to those sort of things. If we can move it back a week, see what you guys think.
Rick, you're not even gonna be here.
I know, but I'm gonna weigh in on this one. You're asking to move the, the Winterfest to a different date?
No, the orientation for the new council.
Orientation. Great, great. Well, I was gonna say, we can't move this baby. It's already in progress.
No, orientation.
Okay, another comment.
I would ask the current, the, the folks that are gonna still be here regardless. Hughesman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it being December thirteenth, fourteenth. Would that be the right time period?
Yeah, I think that would be perfect.
Madera?
I agree with moving it back a week.
Frank?
I'm good with it as long as it doesn't go super late on Saturday.
Hurst?
I'm not sure I'll be here, but can, can the city host that, that week? Like, can, can our staff do that? That would be my only question.
We did talk about a couple of weekends because it was really far out. We kinda decided on that weekend, but we also asked for alternatives.
Davis?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good with it? How about you, Douglas? You might be here.
I'm good with it.
I mean, I, I just figured I'd pick on the ones that might be here and the ones that are gonna be here. And me and you, Rick?
Yep.
We don't need to worry about it. So it looks like you have some direction to, to change that unless you want a formal motion and vote.
Yeah, the question that was posed about staff's availability to do this, I don't know the answer to that for that weekend. We were targeting the sixth and the seventh, given the last conversation. And we also, Mr. McBroom's communicated with candidates, as you all suggested, that message has been sent out to candidates, and I don't think we'll know for sure, you know, until we are able to visit with them what conflicts they may have. I will just share with you, the deeper we get into December, the more kinds of things that you had a conflict with, we're, we're likely to run into, which is why we had done this in January in the past. But we are happy to try to make it work, whatever weekend is best for the council.
All right. Thank you. You have anything else, Wardiola? Teeter?
Yes, now that we brought this up, I, first of all, I'd like to let the public know that Trick or Treat was moved to tonight from the thirtieth because of the weather, and we felt that the investment that we had in the Trick or Treat thing and the companies that were also involved in putting this program together, that we went ahead and did the Trick or Treat at the high school tonight, and also the Winterfest, which is coming up in December, or first, I think it's the first Saturday in December we usually have it. But Suncor reached out to us and gave us a thousand dollars the other day, five hundred for Trick or Treat and five hundred for the Winterfest. And I'd like the residents out there to know that this refinery is still trying to take care of this city, and I wanna thank them very much.
Douglas?
Thank you. I was gonna ask staff, do we have an update on the EV charging station when that's gonna be in operation?
As I sit here, I do not have an update, but we'll send one out as soon as we can get an update.
Okay, and then, is there an update on the sixty-fourth mail overlay?
Not yet.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hurst? All right, no problem. Had a couple of things. First, Laura or Laurel Frambros, you know, the lady on Olive Street that has issues with the non-conforming use, has contacted me again. Would staff please reach out and give her at least some line on what the city's going to do or not going to do concerning her property for the tenth or twelfth time? I appreciate that. Talking about Suncor, I think it's important, you all know, I did go down to Suncor Boys and Girls Club with RDCWALL. And RD, normally, CWALL Handfling is the company that did our two K campaign. And that, that management of that campaign was over a long time ago, and normally that firm would have taken any money that was left over in that fund and distribute it to the employees within the firm that worked on that particular ballot measure. Instead, Mr. CWALL called me and decided not to do that this time, and me and him went over, and he presented the Suncor Boys and Girls Club with a check for over seventeen thousand dollars, which I thought was extremely impressive for him to do that because they didn't have to. What was even more impressive is when I was walking through, there was some young kids in the Suncor Boys and Girls Club that were giving us a tour, and we were walking to all the different rooms. And there was a, a gentleman that was sitting in one of the classrooms with, I don't know, half a dozen or so children and was going over books and reading and, and helping them with their reading. And he got up and he, he said, hey, how you doing, Mayor? Haven't seen you for a while. And I, there's a lot of people that I meet once or twice, and I literally don't know who they are when I see them six months later, but they remember. And I, I think maybe that's slipping from too much political stuff over the years. But I said, oh, yeah, you look really familiar. He goes, yeah, I work for Suncor. I'm one of their engineers, and I've met you before. And he said, I'm on the list as one of the regulars, so when they need somebody to come in here and help the kids with reading, they call me over at Suncor, and I am allowed to leave my duties and come over here and help the kids at the Boys and Girls Club. And I said, really? He goes, he goes, yeah. He goes, I, I love it. I love coming over here and helping the kids and getting them to engage. And I think, you know, it was Mr. Teeter's comments that made me think about how important that is, that that particular company actually has people that they're not just throwing money at stuff in this community. They have people with a heart that are trying to help these kids. And to see an engineer from Suncor that's making a lot of money, to take the time out to go sit down at that Boys and Girls Club and invest in these kids matters to me. And I was, I was amazed because you always hear about them being able to donate money towards things, but the operation of, of that Boys and Girls Club without their investment and without their ongoing annual investment, it wouldn't continue. And it's not just the money. The guy was sitting there teaching kids to read, and he said he does it all the time. Suncor Boys and Girls Club calls him and says, we need a volunteer. So they do, do, they do do a lot in this community, and I think we have to have some passion in helping them to better what they do to reduce the risk on our residents. That's what matters to me. So that's all I have. Is there any other council administrative business before I move on? Saying none. Reports. Brian, you have a report?
Nothing further tonight, Mayor.
Okay. City Attorney?
Nothing additional this evening.
I don't have anything either. So if council has something that they feel is responsible to say at this time during your reports, I'll allow it. If not, I'll move on. Saying none. If there no, if there be no further business to come before the City Council of Commerce City this particular evening, we are adjourned. Now I'm gonna open up and call to order the E-